We will open our morning workshop, the Kentucky County Board of Commissioners and start with the Public Works update.
Okay, we have a few things on your consent agenda. The first thing is letter of support. For Kentucky County Public Works and Washington Recreation and Conservation Office, the purpose of applying for a grant for local parks maintenance. This is for Trout Lake Park to do some maintenance items. The biggest item on there is to chip seal. To patch and chip seal the parking areas and the roads in there. The total grant value is forty-three thousand. There is no match. Uh, there's a local agency supplement agreement between Kentucky County and Department of Transportation for the purpose. This of federal funds for construction phase of white on white plastic edge line. And then a grant agreement with Department of Ecology. Archaeology, D H A P for the Superior Courtroom Rehabilitation Project. This original grant was for five hundred and eighty-five thousand, but the state in their great wisdom decided they needed money for. Admin, so they take a portion of that off the top. So our portion is five hundred and sixty-one thousand. Then we have contract, contract bonds for Knife River for the curve warning and guide signs, guideposts. And then notice to advertise for public hearing for uh. That could get that six-year road hearings and that will be held on October seventeenth at one thirty and six. And then we have one pay estimate. It's the first and final for the bridge painter. To Panther Industries LLC and the amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Those are all federal funds, county funds involved. And that's all I have.
White Plastic Edge Lines project, the contractors waiting for break in the weather and they'll get that project started. Uh, the curb warning signs and guideposts contracts and bonds are on the consent agenda as Jeff said, item eleven. Uh, the annual striping contract, the second phase was started last week and they'll continue as they get breaks on the weather. On road design, the Bickleton paving project finally got approval to go to add. So there'll be a notice contractors on next week's consent agenda for that. Sundale Highway eight, still working on negotiates for right away. You got seven of fifteen acquisitions signed to date. The bridge repair bundles, we're still waiting preliminary funding approval from Washdod. We've got a crushing contract put together to crush rock for our future projects and maintenance needs out of the Fisher Hill Quarry, Badger Gulch and Matson Porries. It's in final review and hopefully be out to add shortly on that one as well. And everything else is pretty much that as well.
Okay, maintenance east side, uh, they're finishing up the Bickleton Highway project. They're doing some grading now that we got some moisture, uh, they're working on, they'll start working on the east road cattle pass. And they're going to do some hot mix patchy. West side, they're going to haul sand to Glenwood, uh, brush in the snowed area. Repair damaged guard rail, grade roads, and then if the weather's supposed to break Thursday, they're going to pave one of the projects for binging. On the upcoming or the facility side, we only have the window graphics and health and a picnic table to install. And then that fund will will be complete. Um, Pioneer Center HVAC is complete. They put in the the units. Joan Fry Arena doors are almost complete. We need some uh. Locking mechanisms, which should be here shortly. Jail roof, construction continues. It's all been dry. It was dried in before we got the rain, so. Was no problem water getting in. Uh, Superior Court, we talked about events, adult horse camp is this week. Or this weekend, Few Islands, the same, flat top is complete. And grounding is scheduled to start October ninth, like we said, commissioning the twenty-third. Um, other follow-up stuff, uh, we have a meeting or I have a meeting with Trout Lake Community Council to go over Title twelve. This evening, the Zoom meeting, they wanted us to go last, last week, but I did not feel like driving all the way over there at seven o'clock at night. After P U D, we had got home at midnight. Um, so, but we are going to do it tonight, a Zoom meeting and Dallas Road has been striped. So I guess the only question I have is, is once we do the Trout Lake stuff, then we'll. We're going to explain what we talked over with the board with them because we discussed all their stuff. And then we are starting to get quite a few uh. Requests or asks where we are with the Title twelve standards. Uh, so when we're done with Trout Lake, we will have cleaned up everything. We'll give them to you to the board that to review. We'll have everything in red and then I guess we'd be to scheduling another meeting. I don't know how much time you need. But we should have those to you this week.
Are you going to be adding another section for just the driveway to a single residence on that matrix? Rather than, you know, what it says driveway, but it's a shared driveway.
Uh, yeah, we're changing some of the stuff we talked about. Yes. So all that will be in red. So yes, there's, there's some changes that we've discussed. So those will all be marked in red. Everything that we change, that way you don't have to review the whole thing again.
Thank you. I appreciate.
Um, question, so with your right away negotiations, is there any difference on whether or not federal funds are used on the project? Does that change how those negotiations go? And there is.
Yes.
And how much does that add in terms of time, effort, cost?
We have to hire personnel to do it. We can't do federal purchasing ourselves. We have to find someone who's. Registered on their list in order to do that purchasing on our behalf, whereas with these, we can usually do those negotiations ourselves.
Because it's just state though.
Yes, and it's expensive. You pay a lot to have them come in.
Yeah, and I think.
More than you do for the, pretty much for the parts.
Right, and I think they're requiring do it um, appraisals on all parcels for federal projects where we try with the um. Using the assessed values and making an offer that way through the A O S process. Yeah, there's a lot of extra steps there with the federal process.
Yeah, that's why we don't use the federal process to buy right away.
So we do it outside of it. We buy the right away ourselves and then because then it actually lowers the cost.
Yes, we've actually stayed away from doing like major construction where you have to buy right away on federal because you still have to get it certified. So it's, they've, they've made it so cumbersome and not, the cost is just unbelievable.
What about um? But you could buy the right away without using federal dollars.
We still have to meet the requirements, so we still hire someone even on a, if it's a federal project, but we're not using federal dollars to purchase the right away. We still have to get it certified, so it still follows their process.
Even if, even if like we buy it ahead of time, years in advance of the federal process and project.
Yeah, you gotta be careful with that because there's laws that says you can't do that. If you know there's a project coming and you purchased in advance, you still got to go back and redo that process.
Oh, really?
Yes. Yeah, it's difficult. And it's constantly changing. It seems monthly they come out with new rules for the right away purchasing.
Yeah.
So that's why we've kind of shifted our projects to more like uh overlays and simple projects because that process alone would keep us. Be years following through the right away process and environmental process together.
Have we bought right away from other state or agencies before?
Yes.
And do we have, we have to pay fair market value for it or they could donate to us?
They could, but they typically will not. And D N R is the most expensive because you pay for the trees too.
Right.
Regardless if you, and they won't sell you the property, they sell you an easement, they still make you pay for the trees.
They'll only do easement they want to do right away?
Typically not, no.
Because they want all the trees.
Yes, well, they want you to pay for the trees, but they don't want to lose the land.
Right.
So they'll sell you the easement. They still own the land. That's what they did on Lakeside.
Yep. Okay. All right, that was my question there. Uh, did you get a chance to go out and look at the barn roof?
Yes, we will have that information. We're doing, we're doing a core as we speak. So we will have that information today.
Doing multiples throughout there?
Multiple cores.
Okay.
So we will have, I mean, we went out and looked at it, but and you can see where. You know, it's penetrated through the roof and it's into the some of the ship lap on top. But to what extent it's stained, but to what extent we won't know without doing cores. And they're in the process of collecting those cores as we speak, so we will have that information today. At the bid opening, so, because that will be a question we'll ask after the bid opening. Which way the board wants to go. So I'll give you the heads up, so I'm not putting you out. But we'll need to know that today because the grants due Monday.
Yeah, I went out this weekend and I started looking around and playing with it and I was like, lots of places, it looks pretty good, so.
Yes, in a lot of places it looks good.
Is, is there a way we could just redo some of that ship lap on those areas that if we find areas that like where it blew off? And how much could we save by doing that?
Because it's.
I think you're saving anything, whatever the cost to replace this year, it's going to be much higher in two years from now.
Well, because it's a big metal standing seam rough, you'd have to replace the whole sheet. Metal, then you'll have a patchwork thing and then anytime you start that, then you have a tendency to create more leaking. Instead of just doing a whole roof. I hate to say it, the, we tried that honestly at the Pioneer Center. Years ago, different type of roof.
I was gonna say what?
Different type of roof, but uh, nobody wants to patch roof. It should, I mean, you patch roof if you have a hole and you, you got a leak. But if your roof is past its lifespan, you want to replace it. You, you don't want to try to, you know, take the bad spots because they seem to grow. I mean, we've learned in that at the Pioneer Center, which will now be another project we'll bring forward. Hopefully we get a couple more years out of it, but the roof at the Pioneer Center, even though we've replaced it, part, or a lot of it. Is now in its end of its life now too. We've just. Just come across when we were up there the other day.
Roy.
I said a couple of years, it can be okay.
No, Joey has happened to make a decision. Without time to ponder the decision. I prefer to ponder before.
I, I know.
Okay, um, anything else?
Okay, we'll see. We'll be here at one thirty.
Good morning, sir. You running something for us?
Um. Yes, I want to know um, how you want to proceed with. Filling the position on the resignation you received this morning.
Posting.
We may want to consider using a proth one-on-one like this. We know how competitive it is. Dan and I, Commissioner Christopher and I heard. At an insurance meeting, three counties talking, they were doing national searches. Um, I just think a posting is going to be static even with the LinkedIn light. Because it's, um, and I did check that position. Actually got quite a bit of, of comparisons in the salary study. I think six counties, I think five of the six or four of the six were in the group we use. In, in that position within the range established, so we can't assume positions underpaid. Um, at least not in comparison to, to those counties in, in our pay plan. Um, I mean, posting it obviously is, is um, the minimum we should do. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't consider. Using a prothman, and I know Commissioner Anderson, you're. You haven't always been very supportive of significant expenses and I understand that and they haven't been very successful. On the positions we've given them, which were difficult at best. Because of the competitive nature of the senior planner and then what was the other one game? Can't remember, but.
It would be my recommendation that we use every tool in our tool bag because while we might be competitive on price. Uh, we currently have a county that, that is a little more hostile to their. Um. Who are staffed and other counties may have their citizenry being hostile to their staff, so. Um, it, I don't see this being an easy find. And they sure don't want to sit around for six months trying one avenue instead of trying all avenues, so. Uh, that would be my recommendation.
You want me to get an estimate from with prothman, what we use is we just have them post it in their network. We, they don't do the screening or interviewing and it's about half the cost. It still can run five to seven thousand dollars, at least the last time we did one ten thousand plus if they do the full search. You want me to get an estimate on just posting it, using their network to get it out?
I'd like them to, based on how much money we've given them in the past with no success and it doesn't seem like they're on LinkedIn reaching out or. Or working on our behalf for these kind of dollars, uh, we pay based on if you find someone. We bring us people.
They won't do that.
Then it's a good thing we have LinkedIn light and we can go out and start searching and cold calling people and stuffs.
Okay.
Personally, I just.
I just think the chance of success is minimal.
Choices you have hired firms.
It's a competitiveness of the, of the.
I say use both. Um, we only have two weeks. Short time, um.
It'll take four to six weeks to get. A normal process, I mean, to get it posted, to get it out there, to get the contract signed. And in the meantime, we'll be recruiting and doing.
Okay.
It won't be stagnant, but to get them involved will take a little longer um, to get it started.
So if it takes four to six weeks, if we're successful. I'd like to discuss what we're going to do in the interim. If that's vacant for. A month. I don't think staff's up to filling those shoes and um, short staff anyhow.
I, uh. There could be a whole bunch of people out there looking for jobs for the reason you talk about. They're ready to move on. They're ready to do something different. I think I would plan for the worst case, months, not a month.
I do think we need to have the conversation. Uh, with Director Lindbad, um, she's scheduled on Thursday to try to find out what items are not going to be able to be done. Sorry, thank you, um, to find out what items staff can't do. Um, I'm worried about uh. Things that are already open and in the works and the C P is almost done and does that mean the new person has to redo the whole C P again? I mean, there's, there's questions I have in that and I think you need to have that conversation.
I think another thing you may want to consider, this might be more appropriate for, for that discussion than, than me. But if it is an extended time. Is there someone we can bring on a contract basis or a vendor basis to keep things going or are things going to grind to a halt?
That's, that's the problem is we, we need to not be cheap. Um, and I'm the cheapest guy in the room. Um. We have to have coverage. We have to, if that means we hire a consultant. Um, to be able to answer the phone when staff has a question or be able to do or finish some of these bigger things. Sure, we can put cop brand and. And shorelines on hold, no problem. But some of these other things out there, we don't just get the chance to put them on hold and I think we need to look at consultant. Um. To give us an interim something. Um, and that's my point of every avenue.
Though I don't know, it's not my area of expertise. I suspect there could be an economic impact. The, the county, to the citizens of the county if we're not able to. Process certain kinds of applications, so. But Thursday's probably the best.
Yeah, can you, can we direct staff to reach out to Director Lindbad and have her make sure she. Has some kind of a cheat sheet on what things are still going to be able to get done up there and what things won't be able to get done up there. So at least we know when we. Go looking, if we go looking for a consultant.
What's pending and has to keep moving.
Um. Is HR going to have uh, any kind of an exit interview?
You see normally.
Yeah. It's optional, of course, whether they.
Choose to do it, but I hope they do to enlighten us. Um. On what we may want to do better. Anything else, sir?
No.
Anything else for him?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep.
Thank you.
Howdy, sir.
Like, see if we can get um. Burn ban rescind resolutions on your agenda, added to your agenda for this afternoon. Um, bright spot. It's raining. It's been raining. And um, all the fire chiefs that have chosen to respond to my requests for recommendations have decided that um. They are comfortable recommending that we rescind all three zone burn bans, uh, October second, next Monday. So if we can get those added to your afternoon agenda, that would give us time to advertise that to the public and. Get that in the process.
She says she's added.
Okay.
Nothing would make us happier.
Me too. The end of fire season is a wonderful thing in my world.
Well, we didn't even have the lightning storms to end our fire season, so that's interesting.
Taking all the positive I can get right now.
Yep. All right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Oh man, just so you know, we are also when we release. Uh, these media releases and so on for these three resolutions we'll be putting out, what we created. So yeah.
You gotta come back to the mic.
A debris burning safety tips sheet for the public and we patterned this after um. You know, other agencies, Rule Seven, the D N R and so on. Um, to help folks know how to burn responsibly because it's not always, you know, the best case. To just start burning as soon as the burn ban is released. And I know Rule Seven is on board. I've talked to the chief there. Several times in this process and they're going to release theirs at the same time. We don't ever want to be in conflict. Um. And they are going to also add to their message that they encourage people and not to burn piles right away. You know, warming fires and campfires, great, but consider what you're doing with your burn piles uh, more carefully. So, just so you know, certain else we're doing.
Okay, who wants to start for pending discussions?
Oh.
Chris Corey's gonna be dead again. Um. What all you guys have on the list?
Um, WAC update from last week.
Yeah.
There was that discussion. Um. I guess I'll go first. So it was a long drive and a long day and uh, I will. My personal feelings was it was a disappointing day.
Yeah.
So of the. Forty-plus topics. Uh, WAC staff had and the. Executive Board Special. Uh, had whittled it down to essentially ten items that they feel were. Uh, pretty unilateral. Of those, they recommended three. Um, and we're kind of asking the board to just rubber stamp their three. Uh, one was the one percent property tax limit, moving it from one to three. Um, one was advocating one point three million budget proviso. For broadband, broadband implementation support services. Um, that's one of the three. That was one of the three. Uh, and then moving the um. Jail medical services from thirty days before they're released to ninety days before they're released. So that started the conversation and it took them one at a time. Sorry, I'm getting closer to the mic. Took them one to the time. The one to three percent property tax, um. Was the hottest topic, the budget or the broadband. Uh, most people weren't interested in because it was just another working group. To provide support to the counties and, and they just weren't too thrilled with that. Uh, it seems like everybody was in support of the jail medical, but the one to three percent was a big. Um. Big, big issue. Um. What turned out happening. Was uh, Commissioner Wes McCart from Stevens County made a motion that we not accept. Any legislative agenda this year and not put forward any legislative agenda this year and just work on items as they come up. Uh, my concern with that is it's a short session. We're only going to be up there four times. Um, things are going to come up and they're not, WAC's not going to be able to get a vote. From the Lead Steering Committee, so how do they really know what to do? The main push and the reason for not having any agenda is because they didn't want to make a vote on the one percent property tax. Um, so they were trying to filibuster, you might say, that vote.
So was it like east side counties didn't want to increase it to three percent or what happened?
Um, it was mainly east side counties that didn't want it to limit or to go up to three percent. There were. Um. Conservative commissioners, um, Ms. Strask from Mason County, that they don't even take the one percent. So she don't care, whatever.
At least survive.
I don't know. Um, that's a whole other conversation. They've never taken the one percent. Um. So there's a lot that, that just, hey, you do you, boo. Now the, the conversation was kind of like my questions to WAC was, do you think the state's going to mandate people take three percent before they get any grants? Um, and there was that worry by a lot of the, the eastern commissioners. Um, but to me, the whole thing was kind of a debacle because I, I don't know that it actually worked to do anything. Other than make life harder for WAC staff and pretty much not let us get anything done this year. Um. Because I don't think the one percent, three percent would have passed if they took a, a vote on the issue. Um. But. The whole not doing a legislative agenda. Um, passed. By super majority.
Really?
Um, I mean, there was only twenty-eight counties in attendance and eighteen of them said no to a, an agenda. And that included some western counties, Skagit. Ms. Janiky voted in favor of not having a, and then through conversations afterwards, it sounds like this was kind of a planned. Um, thing and the, the ringleaders had already reached out to counties to get their coordination on this. Um, not me, of course, because I'm not in that loop. So they believe that some of the counties and some of the people. Um, would vote no to having any legislative authority just so they don't have to vote on the taxes.
Was there?
Because they don't want to go on record on the taxes.
Was there any conversation about um? The tough agenda that's going to be rolling back around that wasn't approved last year, so they'll bring it into this year. And do you think the mind thought could have been, they just want to focus on battling that back off rather than adding items to the agenda?
No, I honestly think that the. There's people in that group that have more pull and more sway with the legislators. They're sitting on special boards and committees and whatnot. And I think this tool gives them more power to push their own agendas versus a WAC agenda. That's my opinion. Um, I think there are some commissioners that didn't want to go on record with a vote. On the um, one percent, three percent property tax issue. Um, they prefer the cities take it up or somebody else take it up, so they're not the bad guys. Uh, which is, you know, typical politics. Nobody wants to be the bad guy. Everybody wants to cave to everybody. Uh, which is, you know, typical politics, nobody wants to be the bad guy, everybody wants to cave to everybody and make everybody happy. Um, and that's kind of what happened there, so I think, so that they wouldn't have to vote. They flipped sides and and made it no legislative agenda, just so this one percent, three percent wouldn't pass. Now, the problem with that is. And I tried to explain it, but. Um, my position was, uh, openly, I talked during debate on the. Um, motion for no legislative agenda. Um, and said that I was opposed to it. Uh, because I think we should have an up and down vote on the issues, and I also said that I was opposed to just approving WAC three. Um, and I did that because I didn't think we were ever gonna have a discussion after that with as many people that seemed like they were in favor of the motion. But, um, yeah, so they voted, it passed, we had no more discussion. Unfortunately, for the powers that be that think they got something out of that, I don't think they got anything out of it because the last, so essentially. The direction to WAC staff is move forward status quo. Well, our legislative agenda last year all got complete, so there's nothing to move forward with. So it's not that we have none, it's just we completed it. Now, unfortunately for the people that pushed this no legislative agenda, there was a vote last year on this one percent, three percent. Tax, it passed by one vote. It's still current, it's still like, WAC will still be working on it because they didn't take a vote. So the whole thing to me is it backfired and it doesn't accomplish anything, but.
So just so I'm clear, after the whole conversation, are they moving forward with the three top three?
Nothing.
Nothing, they're gonna have no legislative agenda.
We have no agenda. And there will be no agenda brought forth to, um. All the commissioners when we meet in November, that's what normally happens, they come up with this list, it's brought to the whole group. Um, and there will be nothing brought to the whole group now, in the bylaws, each county can. It sounds like submit an item to the whole group. Uh, in November, but if a county does choose to do so, or what those look like, we don't know because this has never happened. So, yeah, it was a very long day with. Um, a lot of vigorous debate and, um, no direction.
So it sounds like half the commissioners on lead steering are not in favor of the three percent. So if it's not unanimous amongst the. The counties, why would the legislature ever take it up to give it to give the counties that, I mean?
Well, the the.
How did it even get to the shortlist if the people on the? The the steering committee or the executive committee knew that it wasn't unanimous to begin with, there were forty different things and.
Right, this has been a topic that's been brought up through the legislature for the past ten plus years. Um, it's just because of how counties and cities, mostly cities, are hurting right now. Um, it's, it's been brought up back to the legislature again, it was in the legislature last year. And didn't make it out of one side or the other. Um, there was just talk of having a concerted push and it's gonna be the top item on the cities list. And WAC wanted to partner with the cities. Um, to try to push it home. I don't know that it would have passed because it is an election year for the legislature. Um, so they always play it safe and don't have a lot of tax increases and legislation to increase taxes and whatnot on election year. Um, but, um, yeah, no, there was. Um, I. I think it would have went over much better. For the ranking members to have an up and down vote on the issues, and that's what I called for. Because I I don't think that one would have passed. But that's fine, then let's get to the other items that we could be working on this year in the short session. Um, but. Um, they were afraid of what that vote might pass, so they just chose not to. Have any priorities this year. Um, I don't know what they plan to do next year because, you know, the issue will still be there, are they gonna continue to filibuster and not have a legislative authority or? Legislative plan, I don't know. So I would say that vote was. Three quarters. Uh, conservative eastern counties to do that, but it also did have a quarter of western that. Kind of just apparently didn't wanna take the vote, I don't think it's gonna stop in the legislature because King County really wants it. Uh, for King County, apparently it makes a difference of fifty million dollars. Um, which is kind of huge. But for a lot of us, we discussed what it meant for us, for for us, it would mean the difference of a hundred thousand here, uh, which is a bunch of dust. So, yeah, I I can't imagine it still isn't pushed in the legislature and I can't imagine the WAC is not helping them based on the vote that took place last year. That was not voted on and rescinded this year, so in the end, I don't think anything happened other than. We have no legislative push for anything this year, we'll be reactionary. And unfortunately, since we only meet every two weeks, whatever item will probably be over by the time we even meet. So it'd be interesting. In short session, there's only. Scheduled to be four meets, they're not official dates yet. Um, when they are, I'll work with you to figure out what we're doing there, I did ask them if I can have an alternate sit in and they said yes. Uh, but, um, we might discuss that and and. Um, because of the chaos this year. And like they recommended, just post it as an open public meeting and both of them. Um, we only get one vote, but, um, that way you you're not thrown into chaos. Um, without. So, um, as we get confirmation on those, we'll. Talk about, anyway, so that's how my very long day drive to Ellensburg and back was. Other things, let's.
Yeah, sorry it went that way.
So am I. Um, because I I think there was good things. Um, that that could have been worked on.
We have, did everybody get a copy of the FSEC order yesterday?
Yes.
And have a chance to review that, did you, did we wanna discuss that and talk about what direction the county would like to go?
Yes. Go ahead, Jake, and let me start.
Uh, I didn't see much different between the draft. Order and the final order that that was posted. Um, I think it's exactly as expected, um, based on previous. I'll wait, that's really loud. I think it it's exactly as it was expected to be. Um, and that's why when we had that first public hearing, everything I testified on was on. The, um, E I S and requiring an E I S. Uh, because if an E I S is required, they cannot go through the expedited processing. Um, and that's why everything I've always spoke toward is the E I S. Um, and from the most recent correspondence, um, that we saw, um, from FSEC to the. That's on FX's website, that I've seen the most recent. Um, to the applicant is is that there are two things that they are gonna have a hard time getting over, one of it's the aesthetics. So the visual and the second thing is the cultural and the T C Ps. And hopefully that will be enough to push them into a full E I S, which then means it has to go through the adjudication process. I one hundred percent am in favor of an E I S, always have been. Um, the thing that I worry about is, um, if we get behind the cultural resources and the T C Ps. And if we push that direction. That could have long lasting consequences for the county and for all the other projects that we're primarily in support of. The T C Ps are gonna be used on and are currently being used on. T C P is the traditionally cultural properties, sorry if I'm not trying to use acronyms.
Um, I I get that, I'm just trying to figure out your methodology in there.
And my methodology and T C Ps?
And how if we get behind that part of the argument, it could hurt us.
Because what you're saying is is that that we're in essence agreeing that the T C Ps on on this project. Matter enough that that a full E I S needs to be done and that they in essence, we all know that direction that leads. Um, the T C Ps have always scared me because they're not delineated, they're not on a lab. Like in the gorge commission, cuz I look at the T C Ps almost as like being a part of the gorge commission, and in the gorge commission, you have your. Your individual sites that are ranked, you know, whether it's Rowena or the ones on the Washington side, and if you can see it from there. That puts you into this whole aesthetic. Um, uh, situation that can just completely stop a project. Um, I see the same thing happening with the T C Ps, but the problem with the T C Ps is there's not individual points. So it could be anyone, it could be, if this project can be seen from anywhere that is culturally significant to us today. Even though it's never been delineated, then you need to go through a whole nother process. Uh, or anybody would have to do an E I S, so something that would should be an M D N S or something that could be a D S. Is now a full E I S because of that, um, that one. I don't know how the board would like to go or if we'd like to write a letter of support. I guess for me, it's always been, I wanna see a full E I S, we're requiring a full E I S on Lund Hill, we're requiring a full E I S on Bluebird. This needs a full E I S and it shouldn't go through the expedited processing. Um, I don't know if the board would like to try to challenge the order or the findings in that order. Um, but.
I can, yeah, I had some questions about that because, um, especially about the C U P part. Um, that they found that it is consistent because it is available for C U P within our. Land use planning, so it could could obtain one, but that is. Assuming, because that doesn't say what we would do with that out of a C U P process within our county. So to say that it's consistent, because yeah, you could do a C U P in our county, it's available. Doesn't tell you what you would get out of that C U P and that bothers me. Because we would be able to condition things and set parameters, um, such as the. That have mistakes have been made in the past, we didn't, we're finding out now how heavy. The road use and rose damage might be through our road department and what Jeff needs from that was pretty extensive. Uh, we're finding out Lund Hill has an incredible fire problem, that it was just a little not wired down enough. To where we're sure we're protecting the citizens, so those things to me. I still would have liked to seen if it is. Yes, available, um, that it comes back to us and we're able to work through that to ensure we cross our Ts and dot our Is. Um, so I'm not sure if you have ideas on how all that process works and where you can dispel some of the things that are bothering me. Um, but to simply say, sure, it's consistent because it would qualify under a C U P. That's a broad statement of assumption because you don't know what that C U P would be.
But as they wrote in there, though, they're not saying that you would get the C U P, this is just a determination of consistency. That you could do a C U P or apply for.
That's, I, well, let me clarify how I read it. Um, I read it is they're finding it's consistent, the portion that's in the E O Z is consistent period. Uh, the portion that's not in the E O Z is consistent because you could get a C U P. Now, they took, uh, Mr. Child's testimony that the Board of Adjustments would never grant this. And even pointed that and said, but we don't know that to be true. So they don't know what the answer would be coming out of the Board of Adjustments, so my understanding is through their. How they go about things, they will have an additional public hearing, which will be their C U P hearing. That they will have, that we will have the opportunity to testify on, to be able to come up with conditions. Um, not that they're sending it back here and they did point out a couple different counties, I think. That they had done this with, and I haven't had time to go research those counties. But, um, it sounds like they've done this before to somebody and held the C U P hearing themselves.
Which, where is it that says they can do this?
Right, that's the whole problem. Um, is. Um, how that. How they have the authority to take. Uh, a local land use process from the voters who would then vote on it, five members. And they're now gonna vote on it by people that don't even live here and will never have to look at it. It just seems wrong on every level, but it doesn't necessarily mean they don't have that authority. Um, but, um, it it's just something we need to be aware of. Uh, moving forward on all other projects or all other plans.
So that would be a question for me so that I know. In my mind, where they stand on doing these C U Ps, that would be a question that I would send to the prosecutor. And say, what is FSEC's authority, where is it written, where is it in their?
Specifically what R C W gives them the power to do a C U P.
C P, I would like to know that.
They're not doing a C U P.
Okay.
Okay, so like this was, this was just a finding of consistency. With the local land use plan, that that's a portion of the order. From here, they have two things that they have to get through, number, the first thing they have to get through is the C P O. And with the C P O, they have to determine whether it's an M D N S or it is a D S. Okay, if it's an M D N S, then they've applied for the expedited processing and they can go through the expedited processing path, which. Is just a little different, if they have a D S, they have to do the full E I S. Which will involve scoping, which then all of the questions which we can put forward, like. We have issues with the batteries, we have issues with the vegetation management, fire, all of these things, and we would like this studied. And we can put that forward in that scoping process, th- this is what we would like to see. The road and the road condition on Knight Road, we wanna see this, and so that's why I've always been pushing for a full E I S. Because right now, what they kinda do is is they try to do enough. Information that that's not a full E I S, I mean, they've done a lot of environmental studies, I mean. But they're trying to get to an M D N S so that they can do the expedited. They haven't, in the visual part, they could probably get through if they continue doing more and more studies. And get them to hold off the cultural side, I don't see how they're gonna get beyond that to not have an E I S. But it might be behoove us, um, and we don't have any agreements, but also to send another letter saying. We have reviewed your order of consistency, we would con, we continue. Uh, from the belief that we would like to feel, see a full E I S done on this project. So that we can comment based on new issues that have arisen since the fire. And then try to create, uh, some sort of a connection there from from the recent large scale fire in the county, we have. Um, new concerns that I think need to be addressed in a full E I S.
And new concerns that have unfolded out of the road department.
So in section forty eight of their finding. Um, it says the questions of the project's likelihood to actually receiving approval of conditional use permit. Is incorporated in the FSEC's process in the form of an additional public hearing required under R C W, blah, blah, blah. So that might give you the R C W you're looking for.
Okay.
Um, in the event that expedited processing is not granted. These additional hearings have been used by the council to receive public comment in the matter similar to what would be received. By the county during the continuing continual. By the county during the continuing continual conditional use hearing. In consideration of the county's conditional use criteria. So it's um.
Yes, so for me that's.
It's R C W eight zero point five zero point oh nine oh print four and print five.
Okay, I'll look.
Is what they're saying is their authority to do so. So yes, I think we have uh, multiple options or avenues we can choose on this. We can. We can send F sect a letter saying we agree with you. We can send F second letter saying we disagree with you. Uh, that we disagree on these points. We can choose to. Only agree with the the other letter that they received that of the. Um, visual impairments, or we can argue that we. Um, agree on the visual and the culture. Um, we can advise prosecutor to file suit and defend the moratorium as land use. There's there's avenues to go. It's a matter of where the board wants to go.
What direction would you like?
From all of the above, kind of like I've always been. My opinion has not changed or wavered in two and a half years.
Well, some of those were in conflict, so.
Some of those are in conflict.
Yeah, whether you say we agree on send a letter for this or we send a letter for this. Those are two, you can't send a letter, two letters.
Ah, okay, so full disclosure, um, I would send a letter disagreeing with their opinion. Um, of it being consistent, I would uh. Send a letter challenging their interpretation. Uh, that the moratorium has no legal standing. Um, I would send a letter supporting um, the other letter by ecology or whoever it was that. Argued that you can't do a mitigated C P A because of cultural and visual. Um, I would uh, request that the prosecutor file suit. Uh, and defend the moratorium. And I would also recommend the prosecutor file suit, uh, because in our existing. Documents, it says smaller solar will be small and few and there's there's many other avenues of approach in there that could get. Somewhere if we so chose to get somewhere. Uh, we can't continue to say that the prosecutor won't do it if we don't ever ask him to do it. Uh, that that then turns it on us and it it um, it would become our failure. And hence the reason I'm not interested in that. Um, I do think we need to include in the lever that I don't know how they could potentially even think of something this magnitude. Is a not a full E I S. Um, I mean, that would just be criminal. But I also have not looked at F sex history. Fully to see if they've ever approved something this size is not being a full V I S. Uh, but since that's the argument from Mr. Peck in their findings. Uh, that it fully I S was already done, so you don't need to do it again. Um, I also believe we need to submit Mr. Text testimony from two years ago that contradict his testimony this time. Um, that says that he believes the mortician moratorium is should be done. And that whole comments from Mr. Pack two years ago that are actually a hundred percent opposite of the testimony that they're using in this letter. Uh, so that they can question someone's, if we want to say it integrity of telling the truth. Um, if you flip flop so so greatly, because his testimony two years ago was completely different.
I agree.
Uh, that is testimony today. So if you're going to use his testimony today is is a full paragraph. You know, our testimony is like half a sentence there. Um, his testimony is a full paragraph because he's the creator of the U Z. Um, that's fine, then have the rest of his testimony. There you go. Um, how how can you have your cake and eat it too? And that's what his testimony does. Um, so I would also include that. That's just me.
So I would like, can we pick this back up this afternoon? I want to look up the that R C W and I'll spend my lunchtime working on some things I'd like to see happen. I'm in agreement with several of the things you brought up.
Yeah, I think whatever we do, it shouldn't be a rash decision today. I think we need to have discussions today on where we want to go and then get some homework. And have another discussion at a later point, whether that's Thursday or now it's sounding like I don't have time Thursday. Um, next Tuesday to decide where we actually actually want to go.
Their Thursday that busy or you got something?
Thursday morning is busy, but now I have Thursday afternoon babysitting the airport board. So I'm I'm a little busy on Thursday afternoon now for some reason.
What is Thursday afternoon with air?
Well, apparently the I haven't got to the bottom of it yet. There needs to be an investigation, but the airport board told somebody they weren't allowed to look at the county property.
And I can give you all the information you need on that.
Perfect, let's do that.
Yeah, so at the airport board meeting last week, we had executive session to discuss. Uh, proposals for development on the airport property and um.
I will stop you real quickly to not tell me anything that happened inside executive session.
And I tell you after that meeting, uh, they resumed their regular meeting. And uh, discussed with the participants in the meeting. That uh, there were a couple of proposals that came forward to the airport board. Uh, the one that was more fully developed where they asked, what would it look like? How big? How wide? Give us your proposal. Um, they announced in that open meeting that it was rejected. Um, reason being it isn't going the same direction. As what the airport board and the city and the county have chosen for those valuable properties.
Okay, and here's my question. I don't recall ever voting.
Um, that's because the person reaching out to you. And I've said several times, please come before the board with your proposal. And they never have. They did come in one time and they had that T I F idea. And we said, thank you, but no, thank you. That doesn't work for us. So. In conversations with them personally and then through the airport board. The idea now is that there is money available at the state level to create parks. So of course the county wants to get money from the state to develop a golf park on the airport property. And then that would be combined with the family property that they're looking at to finally fully develop what they need. They're frustrated because the um. Airport board took due caution and said, I don't think that's going the way. And again, I've said several times, we can't talk about this. I can't talk about this as a commissioner. You've never brought it before the county board. Bring your project in. Let's talk about this.
Right, but this is the part that questions me that I need to do more research on what authority the airport board has. To say yes or no to this project or that project. Do they have that authority? Or is that the county's authority because they're an advisory board?
And that.
It should be advising us and we make the decision in our executive session, not the airport.
No, and that advisory board decision would come to you if this person would ever bring the project before you. Then the board could submit what their advice was. The controversy is is that. It's being told to the public now that that is public property and they can't stop anybody from going on there to maybe discuss their proposal. I say go over to the Dallas Dam and ask them if they want to have a development and walk around all over their property. Because it's public property and see how fast the security comes. Uh, you can't just wander around the airport property with flights coming in, coming out. And they were told there's an appropriate place where you can land a plan on the tarmac and there's the public building. You're welcome to those spots. But don't make plans to like a realtor. Wander all over the airport property to pander a project.
Okay, and my argument is still that decision should come before this board. Not an advisory board making executive decisions.
To protect the property and for security, yes. If you went out today and wandered out onto the airport, security would come.
Though they're gonna have to arrest me on Thursday.
Making a very big mistake.
So it sounds like there's a lot of different pieces going on right here, which I'm not in the loop on any of.
I don't have a. Con to any of the development strategies down there. My pro and my con is an advisory board. That seems to have overstepped. They've overstepped their advisory role because it takes two commissioners to vote on something. So unless you two have voted on this issue and I'm unaware of it.
You also have to take into consideration that we're only half owners. There's also a city council over there. And for there has been a very longstanding understanding that the airport board manages the business. At the airport, all decisions like if there's a contractor or anything else have to come through these boards. But that group works as the intermediary between two self functioning boards and that's always how it's been. What it sounds like here is is that somebody wants to come on the property and doesn't want to work through. The normal channels of doing that, which we pay an airport manager. And so it should be the airport manager would be give a tour of the area. Uh, because in order to be on the airport and driving around or whatever, you have to be able to talk to airplanes if you're driving across. You have to have all of the security features in place. You can't just go willy nilly drive down the runway from one place.
A regulation.
And and that's part, I mean, that's part of the FAA requirements if you're going to. So if you're going to go down there and. Give somebody a tour or something, I would hope that you're doing that with the airport manager. And the F B O well knowing what's going on down there. Because you can't just say, oh, P D X is it's public property. I can, I want to go out there on the property. That's not how it works.
Correct.
Well, um.
And they aren't exempting your authority as a commissioner to hear this project and see this project. It was presented preliminary to them and they gave their best advice at that time of how to. Do what's right under law, protect the property, move forward. And those people are more than welcome to come before this board of county commissioners and present their project.
So if that's the case, it sounds like that the airport board shot down their idea because they want to go a different direction.
No, they did not. They shot down the idea because it it doesn't meet with the intent of. Future where the airport may go and also.
And who made that decision? I guess that's my what what board of county commissioners made that decision?
It needs to come here so you can make that decision.
But the airport board already made it.
No.
That's my problem.
That could that you could, you don't have to listen to their advice. What if the project comes up and promotes? And then you listen to the airport board and they say, no, go ahead, Jake.
Well, I understand that, but my point is if the airport board wants to recommend that we turn down the proposal, that's fine. You're an advisory board. Feel free to recommend. I might agree with you.
And this happened in the heat of a few days. And when someone couldn't get what they wanted, they reached out to you. And so it has ramped it up to where we haven't even been able to talk to the board or get this on the agenda.
My problem is not that I agree with this developer or don't agree with this developer. And I want to go with the other developer because that's kind of what it sounds to me. I'm sorry if the airport board is a super secret. Doesn't come before us and tell us anything and I'm out of the loop.
They do.
Um, so I understand the way I get it is that there's two developments that have two development potentials. But because of some of the players in one group, these people don't like those people, blah, blah, blah.
And that's all just speculation.
And and well, and it might be.
To cause you to have this conversation.
I'm having this conversation because an advisory board should not be making decisions for me. I got elected to do so. They're not elected.
And on our agenda today during our time speaking, being on that board. I could bring this forward and talk to you about it as new business or pending business, but we hadn't even got there yet.
But this board needs to give you the the. This this conversation needs to happen. And then this board can weigh in and if two of you so choose to not allow this person. Then you go back to the airport board and say, we don't allow this person. But they don't just make the decision themselves is my problem. The water conservancy board, you don't get to just make the opinion. They do because they're by law, an independent board. They're an advisory board. All the decisions should be made here and brought back to them.
And I think.
They shouldn't be making their own executive decisions.
I think unfortunately, because this was all over Facebook in a heated manner, because there was misnomers. Laden in the things out to the public to stir this. I think this is taken totally out of context. I think it was moving through its processes that you could be totally happy with and agree with everything that was happening. But we weren't able to do our due process because it was driven behind a bus in order to cause some problems.
But I would never know anything if somebody didn't reach out.
And you were going to get that today for me.
But I was going to get it after the decision was made.
The decision was brought to that board to make a decision and have a discussion as an advisory board.
Advisory board to us.
But the proponent never brought you the project. Go ahead.
You already told them no before it ever got here.
If if I may, um. There's a lot of history down there on the east end of that property. A lot of people have spent a lot of money in that area, including the county, including the water district, preparing for. Projects that never follow through. Um, and it's burned a few bridges down there, um, because of those things that happened over a long course of time. The airport also has and the airport board has moved forward with um. A certain amount of information that's required for us to make a recommendation. Okay, it needs to be a fully fleshed out project, not your pie in the sky idea here, your pie in the sky idea here. Go give us, go go apply for grants and give it to us and then we'll do our part so we can make our money. I think what you're saying is is they didn't say no to the project. You can't do the project. What they were in essence saying is you have not brought us a full project, a fully fleshed project. And we cannot move forward with your recommendation or recommendation on that. I think that's what you're going and I have not seen the Facebook, so I don't know, but I know Dallas Port and I know how hot it can get.
And I can fully understand that and agree with that if that's exactly the case. But how will you expect somebody to give you the fully fleshed out project if they can't even see the property?
I think I think what I'm what I'm also hearing is is that somebody was going to go give a tour, but it was not going to be. By the airport manager or by.
Anybody associated.
Anybody associated, you can't.
But that's because it sounds to me like in the emails I'm reading is they asked. To get a tour and we're told pound sand. We don't want to go your direction.
And I advised, bring your project before the board of county commissioners.
Okay, why are they being called pound sand and not even giving a tour? I mean, you could give a civilized tour, even if they want to make it a nuclear radiation facility. It doesn't mean you have to accept it. But when you like one plan and not another plan, you like this person and not that person, it gets into this. Hatfield and McCoy unprofessional. And when I see an advisory board. Making decisions that should be done by this board. They are usurping my authority.
You are totally taking this out of context. It is not one person likes another person versus this person's involved or that person's involved. It's of the context that the airport manager and the airport board manage that property. For the city and the county and did their due diligence to say, hey, what's happening here? What would you like to do? And in the meantime, the city's been informed about the project, but the county commissioners never have. So how are we supposed to do our due diligence and advise? Yeah. Great, go down and have a tour. We think that is something that's a fit for us. Or no, this is a little bit out there. We don't think we want to be involved, so please don't bother the airport. They were just willy nilly going to do it. Promoting to other people that are expens- other people that are expending enormous time flying in on their own, proposed as an investor that may be expending time of their own, when this may not even go anywhere. The county hasn't even seen it yet. So why should we leave the airport wide open for anybody that wants to come and go and maybe bring a project up to the county? I think they need to talk to the county commissioners first. How do we assist the airport board if those people refuse to come talk to?
Well, it sounds like the airport board has plans. All these great and brilliant future plans for the airport, am I correct?
No.
The airport has a master plan.
Correct.
And the airport's board is to work towards that master plan. Oh, there's the airport manager.
Um, uh, we're having a discussion. This is not, yeah.
So, yeah, we do have a master plan and there are great plans and you do see those things and you do approve grants. And you do hear from the airport manager and he comes in now on a regular basis and gives updates.
I, the airport manager, but the advisory board has never in two and a half years given me any advice.
It comes through the airport manager.
And I believe the chair of the, uh, airport board has come up with the manager multiple times.
They have been. And this is, this is nothing, I can tell you, I've been in the meetings, this is nothing personal devious between just certain people. Um, this has been open, it's been transparent. And the people promoting the project have been told in public and consistently the same answer has been what the process needs to be to create a good project. And flat out, they need to visit with the board of county commissioners.
Well, the airport.
And there's a reason.
To stay in their lane, um, or they will be investigated in that, so.
Nothing there to investigate. I'm on the board.
Do we have other investigations going?
Very sure. And actually currently, but.
All I'm asking for is a heavyweight has been put on the airport and the airport board who is functioning super. I'm really proud of them. I'm proud of how hard the airport manager has been working. I'm proud of how he's cleaned up that office and the paperwork and went back through back history and cleaned it up and created a history. They're moving forward to update their master plan, which will be a part of and will approve if they choose to do that. Uh, because they are up for a depth update, just like we are with our comp plan, but they're more current than we are with our comp plan. He's doing a good job. And he's also open and transparent every airport board meeting I've been to with the financials. Um, I don't hear one complaint out of the people in the crowd that attend the meeting and listen to the meetings and gather information from them. We haven't had one problem until we bumped up against somebody that just wanted access at random to property to promote a project. Now would not fly at the, um, doubt, or go down to Portland to that airport and try that, go over to the dam and try that on public property. That this is being promoted as public property and that term's being misused.
Um, I, I guess I will take the moment to say that I, I appreciate what Jeff has done and has changed down there. Uh, in this, my, my argument has nothing to do with the airport manager. Uh, so as he's on and listening, as long as you got that one, sir. Uh, my argument is we don't appoint people to boards that are unelected to make executive decisions on my behalf without me actually getting a say so in that. It, it's no different than case PETA. Case PETA might come to a conclusion. And then it comes here as a recommendation for us to actually have a conclusion. So if the airport board wants to meet and say, we really don't want this guy on there and they wanna make a presentation to the board that says, hey, we're recommending you don't let this guy on there. I'm saying they're more than happy to do so. But they never have. They don't. It wouldn't have got here if I wouldn't have had the conversation today.
None of this is out of circle until you add in the project. And what happened with misinformation or uninformation is that the city, the city attorney, all of them, I believe Mr. Cannell's received some of the information, have all been informed about the project, what the project could be, where the project could go, what the project would do. Emails are flying all the time and I see who CC'd on them, but the board of county commissioners has been exempted from that. And I believe there's a reason for it because the project that they're asking for is gonna be a tough pull for the county commissioners.
And that's fine, but why? Even if the commissioners are not in favor, and like I said, I don't know these people, I don't know their project. And technically, I'm not going to go walk around their project or promote the airport or promote their project or say it's good or anything else. That's irrelevant to me. It's, shouldn't anybody that has a plan be allowed to look at a property as long as they're not on the runway? And make that presentation to the county commissioners, but how do they ever get that plan to the county commissioners when we won't facilitate them to have a basic tool?
So where this happened was airport board meeting on Friday morning. Full meeting after that. Upset person changing things into a narrative that fit their narrative. Then it became the confrontation Monday. Trying to put a lid on things to protect the airport and have people not trespass and do what they shouldn't doing. Tuesday, we should have been able to have a discussion about this about the board. And frankly, Tuesday, they should have been on our agenda and been here promoting this project if that's what they wanted.
And that's fine, but I would still say Tuesday, the airport board should have been here advising the board that we recommend you don't allow this. Not, we've already made the decision.
And why can't I have that discussion with you from the airport?
Because you're not the county. Simply he's not the county.
She's saying, why can she not bring that as our representative, just like we have later today? We have a representative on the gorge commission giving an update. Her plan was to give a presentation and it's somehow become weird, to be honest.
Because the decisions already been made.
It, it sounds like no decision has been made because we haven't made a decision.
Well, it sounds like the airport board already told them no before we ever had a choice.
The airport board can say, no, you have not flushed out your project enough. We cannot take that for because of the, because of the, the policies and procedures that the airport put into place. Because what we're looking at right here is a huge asset. And when somebody or one person in the private side finds out that, that there's a chance to lease property and turn that into a very large asset, you're also gonna get other people who are interested and everybody wants to be the first one to get that ground under lease. Because once that ground is under lease, now you have set that in motion, whether something goes forward or not, which the airport did a long time ago, that one ground went under lease. And so one group who came in, was supposed to do a development, never got off the ground. And so I think the airport board is likely being a little more conservative and judicious with their time. And saying, we're not going to enter into a lease right now. We're not gonna get you under contract or put forward until you bring out a fully fleshed plan that actually has capital behind it, would be my thoughts.
But can't, how can they bring you a flush plan when they can't even walk down the property? Their investors didn't.
Because what the, you're taking it because it was promoted to you out of context that the airport board said no. No, the airport's advice is no, and the end result ends with the county. And we would have those discussions and we would have had the discussions in the last two months, had the proponent of the project ever came in here. And they didn't.
And you've, you've advised the proponent to come talk to in front of the board of county commissioners.
Yes, I have.
And.
In writing.
And so there's also the other piece that many people do not wanna go in front of the board of county commissioners when it comes into uh, land lease negotiations and projects. Because you don't want to give your competitors a leg up. Anything that's said in here is a public meeting that somebody else can come back to. And you're giving away proprietary information. That's why you do in an executive session with the airport board. That's why there's a process. That's why the airport board put in place. You need to bring us a fully fleshed out project before we're willing to make a recommendation or advise the board or the city into entering into lease negotiations. There's a reason for all of this and it's because of the history while on that property. And I, and, and I think the airport board is probably doing all of the right things. And we have all seen things in Dallas Port get blown out of proportion and misconstrued, uh, for people's personal reasons and.
Nobody's yet have been able to explain to me why they couldn't facilitate walking an investor around a property.
I, I do believe that, uh, the, our airport manager had his hand up and he could probably answer the question.
I, I don't get my advice from the airport manager. I get it from our airport board. So I would like to know what was the problem with the airport board arranging a simple half hour little tour?
Because it's, it's been controversial and, um, confrontational from the beginning with this person and to just tell entities you're going to go do things because it's public property and it's none of their business. And they're keeping the public from making money, uh, and put that in writing and put it on posts to think that you can pressure anything you want by ensuing the public to get behind you or another commissioner. That makes confrontation. So when it builds within a three to four day period where one person is being confrontational, causing trouble in the neighborhood for the airport, um, and then makes the decision outside of the airport board with a separate entity and the airport manager, that this other person's going to come and just announces this other person, um, is gonna come bring us on a tour so we can see that public property. And how can they keep us from public property? Well, the law and the rules say it is owned by the public, but that is not public accessible. And he was explained to by the city of the DOWS that yes, bring your investor in, fly into the public portion, which is the tarmac, use the public building. But the rest of the properties are closed to public access. It was never arranged. It was just told we were going to do it. And then he was told, no, don't do that. So we could go back around and visit that and say, do we really wanna entertain the full information of why you want the tour? Who's going to do the tour? How's the tour gonna happen? Who's qualified to take you out there and when do we have permission to do it? That would have been the way. Instead, the airport board manager was told this is going to happen. I'm doing this with this person because he's familiar with the property and he can take me there. And we're like, no. Does that make any more sense? No different than if somebody went over to the fairgrounds and says that's public property. And Joe Smith down the road knows it because he rides cattle there. So he's gonna take me on a tour of that because I might have a project on that property.
But.
That's exactly what happened.
I fully understand that.
And the fair boards that know.
We would never do that and the fair board says, no, it isn't the fair board's property. So I would send a public works person to go.
Correct. And they did not discuss it with the people that, he did not discuss it with the people that had authority. He did not come to the county commissioners and say, hey, I have investors. This is a great project. I'd like you guys to be involved. Here's how we can do it. Can you authorize me to go down and do this? Didn't happen. Our public works could have took him.
Uh, well, it sounds to me that all he wants is a tour.
Not that simple.
Well, that's all they're asking me for. They're not asking me for any support. And I'm not giving any support. They're just asking to facilitate a tour, which they're advising me, the airport board told them no. I'm facilitating a tour. Now you're saying the airport board didn't tell them no, I'm facilitating a tour.
After the fact, when they were, the airport manager was told this was going to happen, he called for advice. And said, what do I do? They're going to take people down. And we said, no.
I guess.
Again, the airport board made an executive decision.
Yeah, we had to. How, how?
If, if, if I. If, if I may, um, we don't get involved in staffs, stuff. We, we pay people. Okay, and what I'm hearing you say is, is that, that they were told we're taking this person down there and there's, and there's nothing you can do. It wasn't an ask, hey, may we come on the property? Can we do this? And they were told, no, you as an individual person can't just willy-nilly take someone across the airport property down to this person. That's what they were told. No, they were not told, no.
You can never do this.
Ask for someone that's a representative from the airport to take down there. That was a complete, that would be a completely different conversation, but that was not the conversation. And it sounds like it was been misrepresented to Commissioner Christopher about the no that was said. And that's what I'm, I think I'm hearing.
That's exactly what you're hearing.
Okay.
And it's also, keep in mind, it was a very short timeframe that this fire has been burning. And before we could get to the bottom of it, they reached out to you with a different story.
And that's fine. And again, I wanna reiterate, my only concern is the airport board is an advisory board.
Correct.
Advisory board to this board. This board has to vote and two of you or us need to agree in the direction we choose to go. The advisory board doesn't get to make the decisions themselves and choose the direction for the county.
So as a county commissioner and as being seated on the airport board, I had an emergency call from the airport manager saying, these people just told me they're going to do this. You know, they can't just wander around on airport property. What do I say to them? And this was going to happen within a, an hour, maybe hour and a half. And I said, no, just say no, Jeff. And I'm a county commissioner making an executive decision at that point because I had no other way.
That's what I'm trying to say. Whether it's you or him on broadband or him on the previous airport, one commissioner does not have the authority.
So had we waited during that time, we would have had trespass on the airport.
Then trespass.
Then trespass.
If I, if I'm. If I may.
I don't want one commissioner making executive decisions on any topic. I don't do it and I, I.
If that's, if, if this is the case, um, I've just been notified that there are investigations going on that I have no idea about. So it sounds like there's executive decisions being made somewhere on something. Um, but that's a different topic. On this topic. We regularly delegate authority, which as the executive branch of government, we can do. Okay, we have someone coming in this afternoon who represents us to the gorge commission. They do not ask their opinion on every vote or anything else. That is a delegated authority. We have delegated a great amount of authority. We have delegated a ve- a fair amount of power and authority to the airport board. They review all of the costs and expenses that go through because that is a by-state organization down there because it's owned by entities in two different states. So they, they are not just an advisory board like the planning commission. They actually have in, in their articles of incorporation when in our inter-local agreement with the city of the DOWS, they have things that they can do that we have delegated to them. Because otherwise it would always be one talking to the other. And so that, they do have more authority than I think you might believe Commissioner Christopher because of that nature of what they are. And they are, they are allowed to i- it create the master plan. That is a delegated authority that we've given them because that's what we expect them to do. That's their job. We're not down there every day. We have a representative from the board who rep, who comes back and gives us updates, just like you give us updates on the risk pool and everything else. And we don't say it's a risk pool, you're not allowed to say anything or have discussions. We, we expect you to go there and represent the county. And I think, uh, Commissioners Oler is doing an excellent job explaining to us what is going on down there, the issues that come up. And very often it sounds like there was an issue that needed to be dealt with. We have an airport manager that we pay that has to make these decisions. It sounds like the airport manager followed proper process and protocol to talk to the people. And then it sounds like someone got upset and changed things and taken it to you. And that's why we're having a little bit of a a heated exchange here when, when really it sounds like proper process is being followed. And, and it sounds like Commissioner Zoller has also done a good job, um, telling. And, and it sounds like Commissioner Zoller has also done a good job um telling that these developers or whichever ones. Should come and give a presentation in front of the board about what they're thinking. Because it might be very quickly that the board or the city council says. Actually, that's not what the master plan is saying we should do for that area. And we have plans for that area. And that would be a good idea. The same thing can be said from the airport board saying the same thing. We have a master plan. This is, does not fit our master plan. We're working here and here, and this is where our dollars are being spent. This is where our effort's going. You know, I mean, honestly.
They were just following the process. And honestly, they were not usurping any of your authority. Because had the project proponent come before us, that decision or those discussions, we'll call them. From the airport board would come with that as a piece of advice to you about that project and its potential fit or non-fit. So it's, it's jumping the gun to say they said, no, they know they don't have the authority to say, no. They could make an advice to the county commissioners and advice to the city because they're our partner too. And we go from there, taking the sound advice of the airport board because they're there living it every day and they know what the master plan is. And unfortunately, this has just been taken out of context um by a person. And there's been a big upheaval caused by it. And some of it hasn't flown. Some of it was rejected from communities that were trying to be stirred up. To cause a hubbub and they sought for what it was and said, no, we're not getting in that. No, thank you. Thanks for posting that on our website, but thanks, but no thanks.
Any other discussion on this topic? Next topic.
That was my topic, airport board. So I'm done.
Thank you for the update. I guess getting back to what was previously said that there's, there's currently one investigation, possibly another, and the airport board might be a third. Um, can you give us any updates on any investigations uh or what you were talking about there?
There's, so it's not my uh purview.
Can you give your seatmates any idea of what you're discussing or talking about?
When the elected officials that are doing their work are concluded, I'm sure they will give the board a note.
Talk about gray squirrels?
Uh, we gonna do gray squirrels at two thirty.
Okay.
Um, I was gonna add it to the, I think it's, it's to be added to the agenda, but.
Okay.
Um, you have in front of you guys um some reading material. Um, and from my perspective, uh, the gray squirrel issue could be probably one of the most consequential. Decisions that happens that has impacts on private property rights in Clickatack County for the next twenty years. So that's why I wanted to give you the information ahead of time to review. Um, and we can think about directions we're gonna go.
Could ask him if he had something else for, if he didn't raise his hand.
If there's nothing else, I would make a motion to recess for lunch.
Thank you. I'll second.
Hey, motion to second recess for lunch. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of recess to lunch back at one o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. One o'clock. It is one o'clock, so we will call our regular business meeting of the Clickatack County Board of Commissioners to order. Let the record show all three commissioners are present and we will start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. It is a republic which stands on nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We're not gonna do the apron.
Uh, no, the apron is part of the um bullet above it.
Oh, got it. Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with three add on. Add-ons under new business, uh, letter of support for KVH ERA grant. Uh, discussion on the proposed Western Gray Squirrel uplisting um and. Uh, oh, I guess there is four. Recommendation for the award of the Contract of the South Apron Reconstruction, New Taxi Lanes and Fuel, as well as rescinding of the Clickatack County Burn Ban. My motion is to approve uh the agenda with those four add-ons.
And I will second, oops. And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Uh, any discussion? And I will add that, yeah, she just removed the fifth bullet point since there's four add-ons.
Got it.
So sorry for the confusion, sir. Um, any further discussion on the issue? Hearing none, all is in favor of the approval of the business agenda with the four add-ons under new business, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, we do not have any commissioner meeting minutes for today. Uh, so this is the time where we go into citizen comments. Citizen comment will be limited to three minutes. There should be a clock on the screen for any of you in Zoom land. Uh, at the start of your testimony, please give your name and your general location for the record. Uh, so that we can put it in the minutes. Uh, please keep your comments relevant to Clickatack County, things that are happening in Clickatack County or affect Clickatack County. Um, and with that, we will open it up. And we always start in the room, so I'll ask in the room first. Ooh, she's taken advantage of it this time. Please come forward, ma'am. Make sure the mics are green and go when you're ready.
Yes, Kathy Moko Goldendale. Um. This has been a really busy September. So I decided to list some of the fun things that have been going on in Clickatack County this month. Which started out with Bickleton Community Days. And then there was the Maryhill Loops Tour to Maryhill and then White Salmon Huckleberry Festival. And uh, we had a Seroptimus Plant Sale in Goldendale and then the High Prairie. Fire Sale and Fire uh Farmer's Market. And then all month, we've had the Goldendale Farmer's Market every Saturday morning. And then we kind of finished last Saturday with the uh. Goldenail Arts Festival. So we've had a really busy month. And uh, unfortunately, last Saturday, the weather kind of deteriorated, but uh, got windy. But uh, anyway, so I think we're all re- really lucky to. Have all these fun things to go to and watching television. We don't have to worry about being afraid to get out of our car and be accosted and everything in the process, so. We're lucky to be in Clickatack County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will go online. Does anybody online have a citizen comment for the board of commissioners today? Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. I'm seeing that. We have twenty-one more minutes of citizen comment, so. Uh, it three minutes a pop. Yep, that's seven people, so. Uh, if you have a citizen comment for the board of commissioners, please unmute yourself or raise your hand or otherwise get our attention. Um, and until then, we will, looks like go upon signing some documents and answering emails and things like that. By all means, if you have a comment, please get our attention. I was, I'm reading my documents here. Um, I thought I'd throw one in to Kathy that she probably already knows about. Um, it's a leasing agreement between Clickatack County and Washington State Patrol. For the use of the courthouse lawn on October seventh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, for their faith and blue community barbecue. So if anybody's interested in supporting law enforcement, there will be an event on the courthouse lawn on October seventh. I'm trying to see the time now. I don't see a time listed, but I'm sure the sheriff's department will. Since they're partnering with the state police. Will do a little better in letting us know what time.
Uh, that is from twelve to two.
Twelve to two.
That's also the same game as the hospital spenders.
Oh, is that the black tie and blue jeans thing? Well, at least ones in the day and ones in the evening. A lot of times around here, there's like nothing to do on one weekend. And then the next weekend, you get to pick your choice between four different things because.
You know, authorized this trip, no purpose.
Oh. It's uh, it, it was his licensing. Look, it takes two or something. He had to go up there and get his operational licensing. Yeah.
Oh, this is after.
And we do that. Ending all the time, there was one in the bills file in the stack today. Um, two actually.
The what?
In the visa statements. Uh, for travel, but in all reality, didn't make any sense to me, but also didn't have an agenda with them. But they were elected officials, so, so they don't have to. Seven, two, one, one. You've unmuted yourself.
Greg Wagner was seized. You know, this FSEC discussion earlier, they talked about having legal counsel advise you. Mister Cornell has refused to say anything about solar, so I don't know what you're talking about having him help us. He's done nothing to help us. And as far as the E O Z, they're using that against us. That's why the new E O Z needs to be reworded and any reference to solar needs to be removed from the E O Z, just like the. Amendment in two thousand and five to the comp plan where it says the county encourages solar development. Wants it and all that. That needs to be removed from the comp plan. Then maybe any future permitting through FSEC won't be so easy. That's the problem with all these out of date ordinances and plans that this county has. It's time to take action and get this corrected. And if Mister Cornell does not want to be our legal counsel and help advise these, this board with the solar issues. He needs to allow the board to hire outside legal counsel that will do the job. Cause Mister Cornell has proven he's not a land use attorney by track D. Amending the Republic landfill and the appeal at the Board of Appeals in Olympia. So it's time for him to do his job, get out of the way and get the right people in that can represent our citizens of the county. Benton County's prosecuting attorney allowed that county to hire its own outside legal counsel, Kenneth Harper. And it's time for this commis- this county prosecuting attorney to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Wagner. Anybody else online have citizen comment for the board of commissioners today? If you do, just unmute yourself or get our attention. By the way, since we have a minute, when you guys looked at our consent agenda today and you see it categorized. Item number one is behavioral health. Item number two is commissioners. Three is juvenile. I don't know what your opinion of that is. That is a change by our new staff. Uh, and I personally like it and appreciate it, so just wanted to take a moment to point that out. It looks more organized and. Easier to follow.
Love it.
We are still in citizen comment. We have a new person in the room. If anybody in the room or online has citizen comments. Please raise your hand or otherwise get our attention. Yeah, the Bickleton is, it's one of those. Complain when you don't get your road worked on, but also complain when you do get your road worked on. So they're happy to finally get a chip sealed out there because they're getting tired of the rock chips and the gravel and the whatever, but. Unfortunately, you have the nastiness of construction before you get the prettiness of having a nice road. Uh, so, yeah, I'm, I'm hopeful that all that'll harden and all that gravel will get off the road. And they'll be happier, at least until next summer, when more projects start out there and then. Then they get more gravel, but yeah, no, there's no gravel for you, sir.
Well, well, I said in the debate, there were several people commenting how nice the road in Bickleton is.
Well, so you should come forward and testify to that fact. Um, citizen in the room was just talking about how people in Bickleton were talking how nice their new road in Bickleton is. So that was the, the conversation that you may or may not have heard. Uh, of which item number twelve on our consent agenda today is a notice to advertise a public hearing. For the establishment of the six-year transportation improvement plan. So if you think your road needs updated or needs some more gravel, that would be the time. Your consent agenda with eleven items pulling number six. Your consent agenda with eleven items pulling number six. Uh, is a contract from public health breastfeeding peer counselor.
And you said twelve, I looked down, I was like, oh.
Uh-oh. Did they have another folder we're pulling out?
Yeah, yeah, it says.
It's not in the packet, is it?
They gave it to us accidentally or just not ready yet?
The thing they caught.
Stuff. No, it's not poker, it's to keep my stress level down. And I apologize for any noise that it causes. My, my stress level needs to. Remain down. I almost forgot my blood pressure cuff this morning for the first time in a long time. Speaking of gravel, when is the last time you drove my road? You get almost washboarded into the ditch.
Well, it helped keep, well, yes.
Oh, I don't drive on that side of the road. Well, see, cause see, most people think they have a two wheel drive car. And they really have a one wheel drive car on the right rear, the other side just picks up later. So the washboards are always in the right tire track. So if you drive uphill on the left side of the road, you're not in the right tire track. So you don't have the acceleration bump. So I just drive on the wrong side of the road and I'm fine.
That'd be interesting. So right on the wrong side.
It's, that's how you get up the hill.
I am intelligent, you can go really fast. You just kind of.
You race over the.
It was true.
It works.
It, it does.
Go fast enough, you're going faster than.
It's, it's.
You might also lose control.
Yes, cause your tires are only on the ground half the time. Um, that is true. Um, but it depends, cause you have two types of whoops. You have the whoops right before a stop sign. And those are braking bumps from people stopping. So if you go really fast, right before the stop sign, that could be bad. Um, so those are braking bumps and then usually when you're going uphill, you have acceleration bumps. My, my problem is the acceleration bumps. I used to race motorcycles, so you had to blitz, it's called blitzing the whoops. Is what she's referring to, and that's just ticking off the top of them. And I can tell you, if you do that on a motorcycle and you mess up. Um, yeah, it ends really, really bad. But doing them like this is not good for your kidneys either. So, uh, we do have a new citizen in the room. Do you have citizen comment for us today? We're in the middle of citizen comment. Um, she doesn't have citizen comment for us today. Um, we've talked about community events, we've talked about fixing roads in Bickleton, we've talked about solar projects, we're talking about gravel. Could be anything. Jean online, go ahead, I see your hand up.
Hey, how's the sound? Is this okay? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I just wanted to say hi and check in with you all about broadband. Uh, conversation of broadband's been ongoing for us in the Snowden community. Um, and we're looking at a lot of, uh, interesting information, just. As far as, uh, you were talking about Bickleton earlier, we're very happy to hear that Bickleton in that area got a USDA grant loan. Program for less mile to the citizens out there to improve their broadband access, which is incredible. Um, we just need to keep that going. Um, we're communicating as in, uh, the Snowden council and the members of the other councils, uh, we've gotten together, so we're all. Actually communicating and, uh, joining our efforts to get better broadband in our areas. So we're all communicating there. Um, we're also taking part in the Click attack county broadband action team along with Chelsea Jones. Uh, in E D D and, uh, M said, so, uh, we've got Carrie Puppinich up there helping us too. So we're, we're moving things along, uh, we're. I'm, I'm throwing my hat in as well, uh, trying to get involved in that process. Um, we're just gonna keep going, trying to get, uh, smaller, uh, startups out here for rural access, uh, to internet. Um. Something interesting that I recently learned, uh, with the Department of Commerce N T I A announcement of allocations. Um, you may or may not know that, uh, Washington was the 10th highest allocation, uh, of the territories and states, which is incredible. Um. However, uh, the satellite internet is not eligible because it's not considered. Uh, reliable source of internet. So we're talking about Starlink and others like it are, are not considered by N T I A, so they're therefore not. Uh, eligible for funding. Uh, so we're talking about fiber, uh, and so on. So we're working through that. Um, we've been introduced to a local provider called Click Networks, so click it, click as in Click it at and networks. Uh, they're recently established, uh, internet service provider in, based in Click it at, and they're looking to serve Click it at and Skamania areas. Uh, so we're communicating with them. Um, working on introductions, uh, seeing what resources, uh, they need from us. Uh, but we're trying to balance the line. If any other rural internet service providers come to us, we're gonna vet them as well. So. Uh, we're keeping things moving on our end, uh, more to follow, uh, but we thank you for any support you can provide in that regard. Thanks, everybody. Take care.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Oh, sorry, one last thing, uh, Commissioner Christopher, what was that you were talking about gravel for a sleepy hollow road?
The six year transportation, uh, plan, public hearing will be announced. So that is the good time to talk about, uh, people that want their roads on the six year plan.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Seeing none. Uh, got one minute left for citizen comment. If anybody's got citizen comment for us today. Being none. Last call for citizen comments. Anybody got citizen comment in the room or online for the Board of Commissioners? Now is your last. For the day anyway. Hey. I'm seeing none, so do my seatmates have any? Um, discussion they wanna enter into off of what they heard today?
Sure. I'd like to tell Kathy, thank you, our ray of sunshine, and I agree, I've never seen so many events as in one county. Uh, Click it at county is very social and they stay very busy. Something I'm thankful for is. Um, how all the children are welcome at the events and how it's safe for the kids. Um, you can take your kids and actually not hang on to them and watch them over across. The way playing with other kids and that doesn't happen everywhere anymore. So we're very fortunate here. And, uh, Jeanie, thank you for staying on the broadband thing, and I think a combined effort is. A good way to approach it, and I think you're really gonna find Chelsea helpful. She's really been a great asset so far for the county and. You're gonna enjoy working with her, but thank you for sticking with the broadband issues. That's it.
You're fresh.
Kathy, thank you always for your kind and positive comments. Um, you are the ray of sunshine we get each day.
Each Tuesday.
Each Tuesday, yes, each Tuesday. Uh, Mr. Wagner, um, you will note, uh, that in F S X order on, uh. Paragraph fifty-six or fifty-seven, number six, that Click attack counties moratorium on large scale solar projects is not a land use or zoning ordinance, as such. Does not preclude findings of consistency of compliance. Um, you have, uh, attacked me many, many times now, um, over this, over the course of multiple years, and. I just wanted to reiterate that the entire time what I was pointing out is that a moratorium would not, uh. Would not protect the county, and that's what I was doing that entire time. You can also note that, uh, when we went in front of FSEC for the public hearing, everything I spoke about. Was, uh, ensuring that they do a full E I S. That's, uh, and by doing a full E I S, they cannot go through the expedited processing application process. Which then opens up more chances for, uh, public comment as well as comment from the Board of County Commissioners. And that is, uh, as of right now, likely the path that it will be going, and that is through an adjudicative process. Um, I have, as I've said the entire time, that this is one of those few instances in which the state has preempted our authority. That has made this a very difficult situation, being a county that firmly believes in self determination and private property rights. Uh, when the, when the state government can come in and override and supersede you. Um, this board has went through the process and is currently has interim zoning, uh. Uh, in place and is currently going through the, uh. A greater process through the planning commission to make those interim, uh, zoning changes more permanent, and that is the public process. That I've always been supportive of is not doing things as a moratorium, cause I said I've never been in support of moratoriums. But the legislative action actually going through the full legislative process. But, uh, where we go from, from that point on the solar, uh, we will have a further conversation today. Um, during, um, board pending on this energy, uh, facility site evaluation council order and where we're going to go, so please. Uh, tune in for that. And finally, with regards to Ms. Patterson, um, the county and Chelsea are doing a great job. Um, we have met with and talked with Click Networks before. We have also, um, had discussions with another. Uh, consultant, um, who's looking for grant dollars, um, for us. Uh, we've been working with, uh, one of our legislators in Skamania County. As well as working with other companies within Click Attack County that are going for grant loan packages. Um, I can say that a portion of Snowden is included in one of those, um, um. Uh, hopeful grant, uh, uh, applications in the near future. I know the grants. Uh, got pushed back a little later than we had hoped, which can be good and bad. It gives us a little bit more time to get our grant applications together. Um, you made a very good point, um, and that is, is that satellite internet is not eligible. Um, and it's considered to not be a reliable source. Um, I can say that this is something that we've looked into. Um, years ago, when the first time that Starlink was granted a billion dollars from the federal government, which then. Could have helped low income people, uh, be able to afford the, uh, the, the base service of, you know, the $600 equipment cost and downplay that. And it still saddens me to see that, uh, what many of us are using for the only broadband we have ever had in rural areas. Is not deemed, uh, enough. Um, so we will continue working on those, but thank you for joining with the community council and working, uh, to get better internet in, uh, the Snowden area. And I did hear you about, um, rocking on sleepy hollow.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, yeah, not much to add to all of that. Kathy, thank you always. Uh, you bring a smile to my face on an, and an otherwise tumultuous time. Uh, so I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Wagner commenting about needing to have changes to our plans. Um, that is currently what is happening, and if you attend the next planning commission public hearing. You might see the wordage changes that are being recommended to those plans. Um, so we are working on it, otherwise, you know, it's government, it doesn't happen in one second. Um, if you do it in one second, you're probably gonna get challenged in court and lose. So we're going through the legislative, uh. Procedure. Um, even if that's not fast enough. Um, Jean, I feel your pain. I don't understand why they deem Starlink to be not reliable. Um, I've had satellite internet since I moved here and yeah, it's always kind of. It's been reliably mediocre. Um, you don't get a fast, you don't get Netflix, you don't get anything like that, but at least you can check your emails. Now with Starlink in the last year and a half. I think it was out once for about fifteen minutes and once for about four minutes. Uh, and I can do everything on it that I ever did on Comcast in a city, so. Uh, I am very impressed and very happy with my Starlink. Uh, but the county will continue moving forward and try to get last mile coverage for all of the rest of you out in the hinterlands. Um, with that, we're at the end of our time and we're actually over, so we will end public comment. Um, and move on to one thirty is our time for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. Uh, today we are gonna start with a bid opening of the Click attack county fairground sale barn. Uh, and I don't know if we wanna just start the bid opening or get a staff update. We'll leave that up to you, sir.
Hey, uh, actually it's up to Ron. Sorry, Ron.
Go ahead and pick the. Free bid.
Okay, that's good. Three is better than one.
Yes.
I will feel that more hope. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Would you like to give any update on this staff update, or you just want me to go into?
After, after we do the bid opening, then we'll discuss what.
Right.
Direction.
So for the general public that might be listening, the Fair Board. Uh, is trying to build a new sail barn next to the old sail barn at the fairgrounds, and so this is a bid package. Uh, for the cost to, um, estimated cost to build that barn. We'll call that our update.
Perfect. Uh, we have an engineer's estimate of one million. Twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, um, for this bid.
And eight cents.
I wasn't gonna go that far. Okay, we have three bidders, um, and our first bid is by Hale Construction. And they're out of Hood River, Oregon.
Your fingers crossed, sir. Mine are fat, ours they cross.
The bid bond is present. Sheet one. I've gotta make sure it's the.
I wanna hear good number.
Okay, so I am going to read the total base bid, not the total bid, because I'm gonna, and the total base bid is one million, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. And then you have sales tax on top of that. Of seven point five percent. And if you wanted me to read more than the base bid, you should have told me. Our second bid is from lead contractors out of Battleground, Washington.
You don't want that in a little bit. You don't want that in a little bar.
Nope, I gave up. Okay, the bid bond is present. We have a total base bid of one million one hundred and seventy-five thousand and one dollar. Sales taxes is.
Included or?
That is the base bid, not including the sales tax. That's a lot of money in sales tax. This is from Pacific Tech Construction. They are out of Tulsa, Washington. Oh, there it is. The bid bond is present. We have a total base bid of one million eighty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Mister Chairman, would you like a motion?
Uh, sure.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to take these bids and return them to uh, Public Works and the Fair Board for a review uh, and recommendation to the board.
Oh, and I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and second. You remit the bids back to Public Works and the Fair Board for review and recommendation. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
I would like to have the discussion, if we could, with the grant that's coming up now that we opened bids. Um, we finished our uh, evaluation of the roof. The roof is a two-layered roof, which we didn't know till we actually corded. There is a chip lap and then covered with a uh, fiber. And then, and then, no, no, a fiber and then sil- silver sealed.
Okay.
And then, so that must have been getting past its prime. And then they just re-rift over the top of that with one buys and then metal roof. So the problem with it structurally, it's, it's in good shape. I mean, it's, it's, the roof's not gonna collapse anytime in the near future. Worst-case scenario would be that you get a windstorm and the metal blows off, because the one buys are not, but that's what's wrong. The one buys under between the two layers are past their, well, the, the metal roof is past its prime and the one buys are past their prime. So that's why the metal roof is lifting up and we've had.
This is how I would imagine to get screwed or nailed and it's going into the one buys and one buys are rotten. So there's nothing keeping the metal in some areas tacked to the.
That is correct. And it is not shot into the second layer. It's not shot through the first, it's not shot through the new layer or the last layer into the chip lap down below. So if you did have roofing blow off, technically you could put it back up.
But longer screws in.
But longer screws in. So that's our report. And then I just, I guess I need direction unless Ron has something to add.
No, I just, listening. So ten roofs can blow off in any windstorm, especially a microverse that comes through, whether it's got the one buys or not. And should always just assume that it's gonna happen sooner or later. With the, the screws that are in there, are we seeing that those are, those older screws are leaking with it lifting up? Or is, but if, if the, that lower section's still good.
The lower section is, I mean, it, it, good is kind of relative term. It was worn out when they covered it with the upper section. So if the metal roof blew off, you'd have to put it back on. You couldn't leave that, that lower layer.
I would imagine the second layer, since you're just finding out about it, was done before you got here fifteen plus years ago.
The first la- both layers were done long before I got here. I don't know.
Yeah, I just remember.
Lifespan of the roof that's been on there.
I just remember some of the roof coming off in a big windstorm years back and they had to repair it, cause I think it went across the power line.
Yeah.
Why I know.
Percentage of the roof.
Just m- metal strips of the roof.
Just a couple of them, yeah.
I mean, I, I. I just remember the one across the power line. I don't remember the others.
Cause that's when you got.
Yeah, that's when I was involved. And I know they just put pieces down, re-screwed them. You could go up there and see what are, what's, what's new and what's old.
So what's your recommendation? We can get some more time out of it, or are you saying we need to replace it right now? Cause.
You could get more ti- I mean, it again, um, I don't have a, a, a magic ball, so um, I can't tell the future. I, you know, could it last a two years? Yeah. Will you, will you have some metal blow off? You might have. But you're right, if you put a brand-new roof on, you could still, the, the less likely, it would be a lot less likely, cause you have something secure your, your nail into. Would it affect the structure? I don't think so. I think we could, we could salvage the structure.
What's the, what's the chances that if we use this grant period to apply for a different county grant? That in two years, if we apply for that as a county grant, they say no, cause you got a last time.
I couldn't guarantee any of that. We've been successful here in and here out.
Every two years.
We've got.
Jeff has done real well with the process.
I guess. My next question, uh, I know you had a range for the bids on uh, the new barn. And we were, worked too far off from this engineer's estimate, which was a lot more than what you originally thought.
Yeah. I, I had told the Fair Board originally what I thought were gonna be around six to eight hundred thousand, then after I called the contractor, discussed with the contractor. That's when I came back and told the Fair Board, it was gonna be around a million dollars, right? Yeah, that was gonna be around a million. Uh, I, I was just throwing out an idea. If it's due to funds, if we apply this time for the building and then take some of that money to help make up the difference between a grant and the money two years down the road. Just to help with the funds, cause you were talking about the concern of funds to replace the roof. And I was just, was throwing that out as an idea. And I did bring that up at the Fair Board workshop the other night. We didn't get into great depth, but no, I didn't hear anybody jump up and scream saying, no, we're not gonna be involved to try to help. Everybody was positive about it. And that was workshop.
Is that building used anything else other than one week out of the year?
You guys use it.
Weddings.
Wedding. My daughter.
Oh, that, okay, your daughter.
And then another.
Like they do the prom, everything else.
Yeah, two weeks after that, that, the Fair Board had to approve to allow them, since it was in the month of August, to use the building. There, there, it's used more than just during the fair. It used to be years ago that they used to uh, rent out parking for campers and so forth.
So is this new barn just gonna be an outside hub? Or are you gonna literally have stalls inside it?
Inside it'll be the uh, new metal panels in it.
So like cattle panel type stalls.
Yeah, I view it'll probably be a couple of different species. And then they're talking maybe putting this uh, sail in it and try to bring everything back to the central part of the fairgrounds, more back toward the stage. We really haven't gotten the discussion of what exactly is going in there. But it will be full with, I'm pretty sure at least two different species, cause the goats this year were outside and we put little tents over them. But we have purchased a lot of uh, different panels now. So we can move species made to be. And then throughout the years, wherever the county deems necessary for the use of the building. How did my seatmates, what are you guys thinking?
So taking a second look at that roof, I know we talked about before, you thought maybe there was some pretty big structural in there. So now maybe not any longer.
No, it wouldn't affect the structural. Uh, we were.
Just good.
Yeah, we were, cause we only thought, honestly, I didn't think there were two layers up there. Well, I thought there was one. So if the metal is leaking through, I mean, it, you know, there's some staining if you walk in there and you look up, there's some staining, so on. And who knows how old that was. So that could have been before they put the second layer on too.
And the, the, the felt or tar to be.
So are you anticipating when you do do it, it's gonna be one by fours and new metal?
Oh, yeah.
And not the.
No, we won't use, we'll use plywood. We'll put plywood decking on. The whole thing need to be stripped off. Can't put a new, can't put a third layer on. More than that. So you would have to strip it all off, put plywood on, and then put new metal on, safer barrier. And then you'll have a, I don't know, thirty-year roof at least, probably thirty, forty-year roof.
Anyway, we can find out when that roof was put on.
Does it, would it really?
I just, I just.
Say that.
I was looking at Margaret, she's a story.
It was in the time when they did the color code. Because they painted everything and put the brown in the roof. But I'm not sure. I mean, you were named the color code and the color code with all the buildings. And I know that they did the uh,
Is when we do go to replace the roof, is there any kind of salvage? Cost is to be able to salvage or sell the metal that's up there as used or anything. It's all gonna just be junk and all do it dumb.
Yeah, it has no salvage value. It's.
Yeah, I guess for, for me, the good part is it isn't like the jail roof that's literally leaking on the control board for two years before we do it. So that, I, I would grant that this isn't as pertinent. Or pressing is that. I do worry that inflationary costs are gonna, you know, go from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty by the time we get around to it uh, two years from now. And that's gonna make it even harder for us to do, but.
But I'm thankful the Fair Board's willing to.
That is a, that is a real, that is a real concern. You are correct. Inflationary costs in construction have not slowed down.
If interest rates stay at this, they'll slow down.
That's true.
I have my doubts.
No, we had just brought it up and talked about it, like we talked last two weeks ago and.
Yeah, and I have.
Neither here or there, really, on this.
So, and I can't make my decision based on.
Yeah.
Oh, the Fair Board's gonna help pitch in two years from now, cause that's a different Fair Board. They might have a different opinion. Um, it would be nice, but I, I can't uh, rely on that unless there's a contract kind of thing. But it scares me to kick our can down the road. Um, that could cost us far more money. And then costing more money, kick the can farther down the road, because now you gotta save up for that project.
We, we understand with the buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I also understand. I guess I'd say, what do you get, what? So if you, if, if we say no, and you're spending essentially probably one point two after taxes.
Tax and then we have some additional work we need to do, cause we are prepping for the site. Uh, so we'll be paying the county, ask the county to prep for the site, so there's some money there. The uh.
Structural.
Structural engineer, which won't be a lot.
So you're not gonna have a ton of duly fund money left over if we don't help.
No, I would say realistically, you know, probably three hundred thousand. You know, like I said, one point two, I mean, be realistic, that's probably where I fly out at.
Yeah, I.
But she wanted, she wanted us to do something like this.
And that's.
Yeah.
Let me just tell you, that's what bothers me, is that's what Eleanor gave the Fair Board the money for. Was something long-lasting.
Historic.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that's where I'm at. In my worry that we're gonna end up costing the county more by delaying the roof that needs to be done. But in the same regard, you guys need to do something with the dang money. You've had it for a while. Um, this is to me a viable project that is needed. And if it could, I guess I can say if us allowing the grant to use on that can help you set aside a little more of that funding um, to use on something else um, down the road, that's a good thing too. So I, I hope it doesn't come back to bite me. But I would be in favor of uh, letting the Fair Board have the grant this year.
Or at least apply for it.
Yeah, stuff got it.
Yeah. That, that's an if, too.
It is an if. It just depends on how many people are asking.
Was that a motion or what are you doing?
No, I was just stating where I'm at. We're still in discussion.
Yeah. I'm in favor.
I'm of course in favor of it. Uh, it's great to hear that we can get a little bit more time out of that roof. I know when I look at almost every barn in the county, that roof is doing just fine compared to every barn.
Mine's better.
Uh, with that, uh, do we need a motion to allow them to apply for the grant? I don't.
Any motion or just concurrence?
I just need concurrent. Okay, that's all I need.
All right, and then uh, hope you're almost happy with the bids.
You know, that's what.
Since if you started at six, I don't think he's happy, but.
Well, you always wish you'd see a little better, but I told Fair Board a million, the issue is the unforeseen costs, like I said, sales tax, uh, some other dollars we gotta spend, but I mean, that's just part of the process. And it's been a long road. So I, I thank the commissioners for your support.
I hope it all goes well and we get more.
Yeah, well, we'll bring it back to you.
And then, and then ideally for you guys, as you guys are planning out the interior of the thing, I would just, I guess I'd say, how do I do this? Recommend that as you guys are planning the interior, you look at it holistically and plan for anybody that may wanna rent the building.
Yeah.
Um, weddings or family reunions or whatever else and.
Yeah, we tried to put the additional electrical, at least we started that.
And help us get a better chance of renting it later to recoup some of the, yeah.
We may have to go back and put in like a fifty amp by the meter base where we put a spider for additional electric. And it's gonna be wide open with fans, good lighting, hopefully be used down the road.
Yeah, there's always somebody that wants to rent the whole facility and we just.
Yeah.
We, I mean, most people wanna rent the whole facility, uh, just because they want it. And then we just add it to.
I know the chamber was talking about the farm and.
Yeah.
How would that work for them?
Exactly, cause they've looked at the, they kinda use the sand shed, so this would be another building for them. There's, there's other alternatives that could be used for.
In the plan.
Married. You don't have any more daughters, so that's not enough.
Granddaughters get married too, you know?
I can't afford it.
Um, so was the hope to have this built by next year's fair?
Yes, be completed by August first.
And I'm assuming it's gonna be called the Dooley Barn?
Yes, and we'll have a picture of Eleanor Dooley in right inside.
We'll have a nice plaque and a thank you.
I think we should have it, yeah, a dedication with the board.
And I'm cheap as could be, but if I need to pitch in for the plaque, you let me know. I'll pull it out of my own wallet.
I'm sure we'll get it covered. But I know uh, one of the Fair Board members has a big picture of Eleanor to go in it.
Okay. Said all I got is your cows on the third floor across from Public Works.
There you go.
So thank the board for your time.
Yep.
And we'll bring you, be bringing this back.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and ma'ams. Alrighty. Alrighty. Next up, we have a public meeting to consider the final approval of short plot number SPL twenty twenty-two dash eighteen in the Trout Lake vicinity.
So this is a short plot number SPL two zero two two dash one A to create three lots and parcel number zero six one zero two two six four zero 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 one zero zero. The proposed short plot is located within a portion of section twenty-two, township six, range ten, in the Willamette-Rudian-Clyftet County, Washington, Trout Lake vicinity. The administrative review of the short plot has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from road, health, and planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this short plot, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of SPL two zero two two dash one eight.
Hey, does anybody have time to look at this in their packet, do they have any questions of staff?
I don't have any.
It's gonna be tight, and it's gonna be an expensive septic system, that is rocky ground right there. But other than that.
Are they, I mean, it isn't on us, but are they looking at having to do one of those above ground septic? Public health questions?
Yeah, that's a.
Down the road issues, but.
So the zoning for this is rural center, and that's a minimum of five thousand square feet, dependent upon environmental health review, so this is uh, the acre, the size of this, and the area for the drain field is approved through the environmental health department, that's.
Do they have to do per holes and stuff before this?
So that's why that part of the soil and stuff has to do with the lab will not size to, for this.
Yeah, because it's rural center, it's, it's really, the size of the lot is based on what the septic's going to allow while continuing to have a buildable house. And guy, it's not easy spot through there, but I think they did a good job getting it all figured out, so. Uh, with that, would you entertain a motion, sir?
I would.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, having before us a final approval of short plot SPL twenty twenty-two dash one eight in Trout Lake vicinity. Our applicant is Susan Stone, my motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of SPL twenty twenty-two dash eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Let's say this before we move on. Or unless you wanna do consent while we're doing this.
Mr. Chairman, we have before us the consent agenda with eleven items, noting that we are pulling item number six. Uh, so my motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, uh, noting that we're pulling item number six, the reason for pulling item number six is there was an error on number six. Uh, not because of policy decision or anything else. Um, with that, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda with eleven items, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, we have before us the approval of first and final pay estimate for the Rock Creek, Rock Creek Old Eight Bridge Painter Project, CRP three six three. Panther Industrial Painting LLC was the lowest bidder in a total amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I would note that this project is included on the twenty twenty-three annual construction program and road fund budget, my motion is to approve.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve first and final pay estimate for the bridge work, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of first and final uh, for the bridge work, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have a motion to approve account payable warrants in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-five cents, and the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of one million one hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents for the date ending September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second to pay the bills, any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. You ready for our gorge commission opening? Okay, two o'clock, uh, we have Valerie Fowler updating us on the Columbia River Gorge Commission. Who, for those that don't know, is our county's appointment to the gorge commission.
Commissioners, good afternoon, and thank you for the invitation to come, uh, catch up with you all. Um, uh, last time when, uh, the executive director, Christina Wallenanci, was here, uh, together with myself, we mentioned the Climate Change Action Plan and the Vital Signs Indicators, I've checked in with the commission, and the, the, um, quarterly updates will be, uh, given in public session on October twelfth or tenth, the, the fir, the second Tuesday, um, I, in, in our public meeting. Um, it's one of our two annual, a twice annual, um, open sessions where all the commissioners, the gorge commissioners are there in person. That'll be in the Cascade Locks. Um, so they, I don't have, I regret, anything for you on either of those subjects today that's new, because it's not yet ready for, um, primetime, um, as I understand it. Um, Lisa Nass Cook is working really hard on those, she's doing in a very, very, um, extensive and impressive uh, work, and as someone who cares deeply about our climate in the county and in the gorge and in the broader region, I'm just so happy she's a member of the gorge commission staff. Um, the, uh, by-state compact came up in the last gorge commission meeting. As I know, at least Commissioner Zoller was on the call, and I'm not sure if either Commissioner Anderson or Christopher were as well. Um, and the decision was made to, um, uh, by vote of the commissioners to move forward with conversations between the gorge commission and the two governor's offices, um, Governor Inslee, um, uh, here in Washington, as well as, um, uh, the governor in Oregon. I, I, um, during the call expressed, um, some concerns, concerns about making sure that the counties were, uh, fulsomely included in that conversation. Um, and as did our Wasco, new Wasco County Commissioner, so the Eastern Gorge took the, took, um, a fairly similar perspective um, on, uh, we'd like to be in the conversation, um, as, as much as possible. And so I will continue to take that perspective, uh, pursuant to any additional course, uh, guidelines that you would have to offer. Um, but I think what the next steps are that, um, the, uh, the gorge commission staff is going to reach out and talk to the two governors' offices. They're not expecting to get it into the short session in Oregon in twenty twenty-four, so this is a longer range conversation. Um, one that should allow ample time to include a lot of stakes, stakeholders and rights holders um, in the process, and so, uh, I will be working to advocate for that. Um, I do have a request of you all, um, for your, uh, guidance and assistance. Um, uh, but before I, uh, do that, I'd like to ask, after that brief preview, if there's anything you would like to ask of me.
Any regrets?
No, not at all, I, I, uh, you know, after serviced the country for thirty years, it's really nice to be serving our community. And I think it's, um, it's very important that we have, um, uh, engaged representation um, and engaged impartial representation. Um, coming, um, back to the Pacific Northwest after being in that other Washington, um, on assignment and overseas for so long. It's, um, really nice to be able to, uh, be an advocate for the, the people of the community as well, so, no, not at all, I, I think the gorge commission is a very, very important entity, and it, it needs serious representation, so, I, I thank you for your nomination.
And I, yeah, and I have to say, um, I, I was really, really pleased, listening to the meeting. Uh, we didn't get to talk first, and you didn't get to talk with our board about what our direction might be, and, um, you're a perfect fit, you jumped right in, and you said everything that I would have tried to communicate, and you advocated for um, involvement, and, uh, fit right in with the other counties, uh, what everybody's looking for, so I was really, really pleased with that meeting and, and how you helped wordsmith the statement that they were going to submit, and it brought it back around where it was inclusive rather than just a done deal where they were gonna head where they wanted. And, uh, that made me happy.
Delighted to hear that, thanks.
I don't have any questions, but I am interested in this ask.
Yes. I understand that a lot of people out in, or a number of people out in the public wonder who the heck I am.
Think you're wishing to, so.
Um, so what I'd like to do is do a sort of a meet the commissioner, gorge commissioner event, uh, open to the public. Um, very casual, um, I just saw that, um, anybody who wants to ask me any questions um, or engage or just say hello, or have a, have a beverage, um, has an opportunity to do so. Because I don't want to be at an unknown mystery, and I don't want to be, that, that was redundant and repetitive, sorry. I don't wanna be an unknown, um, I know that this is a very specific and defined role um, that is not a political role, um, it doesn't, my personal politics, um, just as in my diplomatic career, have nothing to do with um, uh, my, um, ability to do the job, but I don't want people who I've never met to try to define who I am. So, I'd like to do a meet the gorge commissioner, um, event, um, ideally within the National Scenic Area. And, uh, a wise person who knows the area very well suggested maybe the Grange on Old Highway Eight, which has the advantage of being a public space, a non, not linked with any particular organization other than the county. And I understand is near some land that was just sold, and there's a lot of interest in what's going to happen to that land in the National Scenic Area, so, um, I, I'm looking for suggestions on how to get the word out, and to find an appropriate date.
And I feel like we've kind of dropped the ball, and we probably should have facilitated that for you, and made sure that you were well-known and were representing the people of this county, so, um, if that's your chosen spot.
It, not necessarily, I'm open to suggestions, I just, um, one of my bosses a long time ago said, bring me solutions, not just problems. So I wanted to, to give you.
And I very much appreciate that. I have enough prop.
Yes.
Um.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I mean, to me, I'm open on your location, I think it's a wonderful idea, I think uh, government and all boards, commissions and whatnot should be far more um, call it transparent. Um, and, but I also don't wanna micromanage uh, any ideas or thought process or locations or times or dates or or whatever else, other than saying that I'm in full support, and if you would like to see me there, let me know. And I will notice it in the paper and make sure I'm there, just for you.
You, of course, would all be encouraged and welcome to join, um, after all, I wouldn't be there if I, if it weren't for the three of you, so. But by no means a, a requirement or even a, a request, just an, um, how would you suggest that I for lack of a better word, get the word out about the event in advance, and what sort of note timeline in advance would you suggest?
I would reach out to both parties, to be inclusive.
Use the, to use.
The Republican Party and the Democratic Party, so they can reach out in their newsletters, um.
Okay.
They have a pretty broad base.
I would imagine, since this is a, you are acting in your capacity as a gorge commissioner, that this would qualify for the county to cover legal postings. Um, that we might be able to post it in the legal section that this meeting is taking place. Um, other than that, I think you're kind of reaching out to the papers and hope they're willing to print something.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, if you reach out to, uh, Lisa, she can help you do that.
I will.
Uh, and then do you need contact for both the Republican and the Democratic Party, I'll send those.
That would be very helpful, thank you, yeah.
Cause I, I would imagine there's people on both sides of that political aisle that are uh, very interested, so, yeah.
I would hope that frankly, regardless of your voting preferences.
Point, they're pretty much unilaterally agreed on that topic, I think, but.
It's nice to find some points of unity.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll send you contacts too for the community councils.
Fantastic.
They're all very engaged and very busy, so, uh, and they get the word out.
Terrific. Yeah, I didn't want, I was trying to think of a place, and a friend came up with this idea that wasn't in a particular city, cause of course the urban growth boundaries are different, and they're not managed the same way by the, the gorge commission, so rather than hosting it in a city, although I would be happy to come up to Golden Dale to do anything up here in addition, um, uh.
In my two and a half years in office, I've heard one person talk about the gorge commission in my community, and that one person thought we were a part of the.
Oh, but you were the commissioners.
No, that we were a part of the gorge commission.
Oh, the National Scenic Area Boundary, aha.
So, and.
That, that stops at Maryhill.
Right, and they thought that we were soon going to be. So, a little conversation kind of steered that, but, uh, but yeah, that's the only person up here that I ever talked to that has any knowledge on the subject, you get in those two areas, yes, it's a high topic of conversation.
Right. Well, the gorge commission said this, that, well, the, the executive director said she hadn't heard of this being done in her eight and a half years or, or so. So they didn't have, uh, she, she didn't have any particular, um, past practices to apply.
So, I, I would hope that the gorge commission, um, would put it on their Facebook page, um, and then as well, uh, you can call in KLCK, they'd be happy to probably mention it in the other radio stations. Um, and then my, my advice, um, for meet the, the commissioner, I, I think there's a couple options down there. I think the, uh, uh, the Lyle Hotel is opening back up, and that would be a good spot, and you could do like some food and allow people, and and then it would be a little bit more sociable than, you know, you just sitting around there waiting for the next people to talk. Um, and if Hot Walk opens back up, or if it's open, that might be a good spot. Um, I've never actually been in the Grange on Old Highway Eight.
I, I didn't even know it was there.
Uh, it's come up in a couple of discussions over the last year, but I didn't even really know it existed still. Um, most of us use the Lyle Lions Club is for most of our meetings down there, but I think and Lyle is a perfect spot right in the middle that would get people on both sides. Um, for at least the people that are most impacted by gorge commission.
I, I would agree with technically all of what he said. Um, I think if you had it in a place that allowed food and beverage, you would get a better attendance.
Yeah.
Um, at least we do up in my neck of the woods. Um.
Lyle Lions Club has a full kitchen.
Ah, okay.
But you would be responsible then.
For cooking something, where if you did it at one of the other places, they can order their own hot wigs and glass of wine if they so choose.
And I'm trying to think of her name, you might know, that's remodeling the building there on, uh, Lyle Point, as you come out of. Yeah, how soon they plan on having that building done.
I'm not sure, that they were still working on the deck, but it looks like it's.
Going on forever, yes. So it might not be done this fall.
We know, what is that gonna be?
I heard a wine tasting room for one of the wineries that's on the old.
Oh, so back to, back to a wine tasting, cause it was five years ago.
And then maybe a early morning coffee bakery, and then downstairs would still be a rental, and available.
I just, they'd put all that work into the deck, and then it looks like they blocked it off, and now you can't see out of it, I'm like, what in the world are they building?
Be a great restaurant, yeah. Stunning location highlighting the scenery of the gorge.
No, I like it, I like the idea, I like the idea that you're um, moving forward with it in a non-political fashion. Um, hopefully the attendees, um, can be persuaded to do the same. Um, and I think it'd be good and beneficial and educational, hopefully, for everybody that attend.
Well, I think there's a lot of information out there that, like you found, that's, um, somebody starts talking about something that, um, will not come to pass, the gorge commission, the National Scenic Area boundaries haven't changed since nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven. When the act was signed in eighty-six, and the by, by-state compact was finished in eighty-seven. Um, but people are concerned if something, if they feel something else might apply to them, a, and, uh, they don't know what it is, so.
You, you missed out on that fight, the gorge commission boundaries, cause it was written with a thick marker, and so there was a lot of years of fighting over where that line actually is.
Well, having, having been placed our property in the special management area as a last minute change, instead of just the general management area, I can tell you from the two years that it took us to get all the requisite permissions that those little lines can make a difference. So, I can appreciate how, um, people were, uh, uh, personally. So I can appreciate how people were personally interested and personally invested in in where those lines go.
Yeah, I think that was money well spent by this county. So. Okay. Anything else on?
I'll send that right to you right away. I'll gather those up and then just keep me in the loop and I'll hope with whatever I can.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you very much for your time.
I would do the same and I would direct staff that when you do, when she does figure out a date and post it, make sure you throw a little thing on there that one or more commissioners may attend just to cover our Open Public Meetings Act if we have more than one show up.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am, for all you do. And you're never allowed to resign or retire, just so you know.
Lifetime commitment.
Yep. It's it's lifetime appointment. If you come to a mic so everybody can hear you. I always have time for you, sir. You're my favorite HR director. You're lucky I didn't say second favorite.
A good sound.
I appreciate that. What are you laughing about?
My favorite solid waste director, my favorite compliance director.
So I'm here as a risk manager today. We just got notice from the insurance carrier, got the final piece of the premium. So you may recall fifteen of the twenty four counties were one of those purchases of five million dollars in excess insurance in effect gives us twenty five million dollars worth of coverage versus twenty. And the fifteen counties equally share that premium. So if one county drops out, the other ones have to pick it up.
But there's fifteen of how many again?
Well, the total pool, I think there's twenty four, twenty five counties in the pool. I can't remember.
When someone drops out, shouldn't the premium go down?
This is optional. No, if somebody drops down and doesn't pay, it's a fixed rate.
Yeah.
Four hundred and fifty two thousand dollars and to buy this and it's divided amongst the counties that opted to do and we opted initially to do it. So the current premium in the year we're soon ending here was eight thousand one hundred and ninety six dollars. That was for ten months. Remember, the first year was shorter for us. It would have been nine thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars had we been in for a full twelve. The new premium would be ten thousand eight hundred and eighteen. So roughly a thousand dollars more for additional five million dollars. Some may question that Spokane County recently exceeded their twenty billion dollar cap by almost three million dollars. And got to write a check for almost three million dollars out of their reserves. So it is possible. So I
And they didn't join it the next year?
So
I don't know if they're.
Each part of our insurance, for those of you that don't know, one company's insuring our nobody's insuring our first two million kind of thing, the pool. And then one company covers this three, another company covers this two, another company. And it just tags on and on and on. And you can get an endless amount for however much you want. And we do have what some counties would consider excess for our ten thousand dollars. We get an extra five million in coverage, but I think it's a very wise expenditure. When we start seeing lawsuits in the twenty twenty two million range. Because if we don't have it and we get a lawsuit for jail death or whatever else that that comes into being such a high number. And we have to write the check, we're writing the check out of our reserves and are taking out a loan to write the check. So while I would like to save ten thousand dollars, I also not for the life of me, I'm interested in saving.
I apologize for bringing this to you at the last minute. They I just got the email and they needed an answer. Honor before you meet next Tuesday and I didn't want to it's it's only a thousand dollars out of a million dollar premium, but I didn't want to make the assumption that that you wanted to do it.
I very much appreciate that you brought it to us and is looking for guidance. And unless there's further discussion, my guidance would be sign us up and we'll see what the other commissioners guidances.
I agree.
I'll report back if anybody drops out. They didn't anticipate that they're already starting to get emails from other counties saying they're in.
Well, and it's it's kind of like me with my own life insurances. Prices go up on insurance, you start looking on what little things you can tweak and maybe you don't need as much coverage and but that's always a risk. And so I I can picture some counties dropping in in the future, some counties going up.
Well, I think they mentioned and I don't quote me in this that, you know, they're down to one carrier. They changed carriers this year because as you recall from the last meeting. When these big payouts are paid, insurance carriers get nervous and will not offer to underwrite anymore. So it's getting harder. That's why they raised it to five because they couldn't get anybody to to underwrite the initial costs.
Piece of guidance before you go away, since you're talking to the insurance company, can you please ask them about insurance for the youth posse? And is that going to be covered under insurance or are we gonna need to go to an outside insurance company to do that?
We'll do that.
So get us an answer there so we can get that all set up.
Okay. Thank you.
We're gonna talk about this. Two thirty. Do we need a discussion on the KVH ERA grant letter of support? Does everybody know what that is?
So yes, for a little history of the applying for a grant, it's a hundred percent grant match. Jonathan reached out to me and asked for a letter of support. I told him that I would have one drafted and presented to you guys for discussion on whether you wanted to sign it or not, and that's why you see it before you.
It's hard for me to believe that that ground source heat pump will reduce the carbon, the hospital's carbon footprint by ninety three percent. Considering how large they are, but I have no problem signing this. So
I'm on board.
South Apron. Reconstruction, new taxi lanes and fuel lines.
What is what was the total amount of that one, by the way? I'm just looking for a little refresher and how much of it was is that the one they get the ninety percent grant and then they got another grant covered the ten percent? Is that the one I'm remembering correctly?
Yeah, it's fully covered.
That's I thought. I thought it was in.
Bid including sales taxes, two point nine six two million. Did it have bid scheduled totaling four hundred and one thousand grand total base bid is three million, three hundred and sixty four thousand and three dollars.
Right. I was just thinking that was the one that they got the grant coverage for.
And then and then Jeff found even more money out of Oregon. For.
Right. So in short, they're not asking for any county money or it's covered. Yeah.
Would you like a motion on it?
Do we need to do that as a motion?
Yep. It's an award of a contract.
Any other questions on the issue before we move?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have before us a recommendation for the award of the contract for the South Apron reconstruction and new taxi lane as well as the new Fuel Island Apron. AIP number three dash four one dash zero zero five nine dash zero two zero dash two zero two three. And AIP E I L number three dash four one dash zero zero five nine dash zero two one dash two zero two three. My recommendation and motion is to approve as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on a second to approve. Any discussion and I will make note that this is for the Clicktack County Dallasport Airport. For anybody that thinks Golden Dale is getting to makeover by the county. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the contract for the South Apron reconstruction taxi lanes and new fuel at the Dallasport Airport. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would also note that we have before us a letter of appreciation to one Norm Dio for all of his time he has spent on the Pumbeere Gorge Airport Board. It was not on our agenda as a new item, but I would just like to publicly thank Norm for all of his time that he's spent for the Better Medical Attack County.
Does it say how many years it was?
It does not.
Said going back through board appointments, it's I it was a long time, that's for sure.
Pretty close to the, I think he was on pretty close to the beginning when we entered into the interlokal.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dio. The board thanks you. We have before us a resolution on the matter rescinding the Clicktack County burn ban. We want to address that. It should be, I think it was the last thing in the agenda file. Agenda folder. Last page, I believe.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have before us a resolution to rescind the Clicktack County burn a ban on outdoor burning within the unincorporated areas of Clicktack County. Burn ban three, two, and one. There are three separate resolutions, I believe. And my motion is to approve all three resolutions on the burn ban.
And that will take effect October second.
Effective October second.
Okay.
Perfect. Good addition. Hey, we have a motion on a second to remove rescind the burn ban for all three burn districts effective October second, twenty twenty three. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Burn with burn with your brains out there, people. And I think that was the last. So I think that was the last motionable item. Everything else is just discussion.
There was two. There's two of these on here. Just so you guys know where the signature page is. On burn ban three, two, and one, there's another one. We didn't get all the, so there's this. And then if you come back here.
I'm sorry, that second resolution doesn't need to be signed, just the one. The second one is what's included in your the the packet for your scanning.
Well, that works too. Thank you, Director King.
You're welcome. Sorry about that.
He said, don't cite the second page?
Yeah.
I won't bother.
Fine. See, our staff was on the ball with the correct sticky notes.
Mr. Spadero was online, just so you know. He just signed it.
Oh, good.
Is that who you're having lead this conversation on squirrel?
Yeah, pretty much. Okay.
The next item before us is a discussion on the proposed relisting of the Western Gray Squirrel. And it sounds like we have Mr. Spadero on the line. Do you want to speak up and give us some insight into your thought process on this?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission. My name is Jason Spadero. I'm a resident of White Salmon. I own a forest consulting company called Noble Forest Company. And one of my clients is Washington Forest Protection Association where I serve as the executive director of WFPA. WFPA is a trade association, represents private forest land owners in the state of Washington. Our membership comprises about four million acres statewide. And we are primarily large timber companies, large, medium, and small size, but dominated by the very large companies. That's the most of our acreage. Locally in Clicktack County, Green Diamond slash TCT Twin Creeks Timber, they were the acquirers of the SDS Timberlands in Western Clicktack County. They are a member locally. Manu Life is a member locally, owns land in Glenwood and surrounding area. And Broughton Lumber Company is also a client of mine. I represent Broughton and they're Broughton is a member of WFPA. So I've been in the forest industry for over thirty years. I was a forester for SDS. Became president of the company in nineteen ninety eight and served as president until just before the sale. So I know several of you. Some better than others and have had a long history. And I've been around the block in this area with forest land management for quite a while. The Western Gray Squirrel is a currently a state threatened species and the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife is tasked with doing periodic reviews of the status of Western gray squirrels. And on this latest periodic status review, the Department of Fish and Wildlife is recommending uplisting the Western gray squirrel to endangered status. My, I don't have a lot of, I've read the periodic status review. I don't have a lot of insight into the Department of Fish and Wildlife's thought process, other than what I've seen in the periodic status review and meetings with Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. Our concern as forest land owners. And I I shared with Commissioner Anderson who asked for copies of any comment letters that Washington Forest Protection Association has submitted to the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Fish and Wildlife Commission, who ultimately is the one that decides the outcome here. So I shared our WFPA comment letters on behalf of the forest land owners that we represent. I know many of our companies also submitted their own comments to the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Fish and Wildlife Commission. And I would encourage the county commissioners to send a a letter from the county on the status review and the proposed uplisting. And here's why. As a forester who's operated in this county for many years, I have seen and witnessed firsthand the population of Western gray squirrels rise and fall. They are cyclical. But the one thing that we know is that we as landowners while populations go up and down, we as landowners have done a lot of voluntary measures to protect Western gray squirrel habitat and protect nest sites when we harvest or manage our trees. We have entered into these voluntary agreements with the local fish and wildlife biologist and would become those things become conditions on our permit that we get to harvest from DNR. And my concern is that those voluntary measures are going, once the Western gray squirrel, if it is uplisted to a state endangered species, there could be a more rigid approach adopted by the Forest Practices Board that requires specific protections around every nest site. And the voluntary measures that we we enter into oftentimes are better than what might be required by law, but they certainly sometimes they're better, sometimes they're less, sometime it's a little bit of trade off. We will leave more habitat in a different area in as mitigation for leaving less habitat in others, but it's a more collaborative approach. And works better for everybody. Rigid approaches that which often happen when a species is uplisted to endangered don't work very well. We witnessed that in the timber industry with the spotted owl. Where individual nest sites with a big protective buffer cause some landowners to be heavily impacted and others that are outside are away from a spotted owl, less impacted. And there's clear winners and losers. And some of you may recall that SDS was at the forefront of that. We had a lawsuit against the state of Washington for takings of our private property due to a spotted owl nest site between Beezy and Trout Lake, Washington. And we settled with the state of Washington. The jury found in our favor that there was a takings of property and the state appealed, but then ultimately settled. And we don't want anything like that happening. These rigid inflexible approaches that often happen when species are. inflexible approaches that often happen when species are listed as endangered are contrary to the public's interests and landowners and the, the interest of Clickcat County. So the other thing that we know is, uh, there is not a lot of information that Department of Fish and Wildlife has about the status of the Western gray squirrel population. What their status review says that because habitat has declined and their definition of habitat is, in our view, very questionable, but they're saying there's been a decline of habitat, therefore the species could be endangered. But they, what they don't know is they don't have a good handle on the actual population of squirrels to know whether they're truly endangered or should they remain as threatened. That's one issue, is a lack of information. The other is a lack of understanding about what is Western gray squirrel habitat and what is the correlation between habitat alteration, changing the density of trees or the location of forest cover and the impacts of that to the Western gray squirrel. So we as an industry, uh, the landowners I mentioned earlier, I, I forgot to mention, uh, uh, DG S Timber, who is represented by American Forest Management, is also a local member in Clickcat County. But all of those landowners, Broughton, DG S, Manu Life, and TCT, all submitted letters and, as did WFPA. And we are encouraging, uh, the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Fish and Wildlife Commission to not uplist the Western gray squirrel to endangered status. Last thing I'll say is that before us, open, uh, ask if you have any questions, is you know, there are impacts to people's property and people react when they have endangered species on their property. Uh, I, I anecdotally hear, uh, landowners concerned about this pending threat to land ownership and forest management. And people are, are harvesting now before, uh, they become restricted. And it's, it's really unfortunate that, uh, with the, the lack of information that's, that is available and the opportunity for us to work collaboratively to gain more information and that Department of Fish and Wildlife wants to go down this path of uplisting, it's unfortunate because the, it can have unintended consequences and negative outcomes, creating, uh, uh, fear and concern among landowners. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I encourage you to, uh, the commission to send letters on behalf of the citizens of Clickcat County. And if you have any questions, uh, for me or need any information, I would be glad to provide it. I, I know you don't currently have a natural resources, uh, position, uh, that's filled at the county level. So if you all want any information, our association can provide it. And I'm sure that many of the landowners that are interested in this topic could also, the ones that I mentioned earlier, uh, they could also provide information to the county to help you craft your letter. Any questions?
Uh, Jason, so you spoke primarily from the timber side. What are your expectations about as a landowner, property owner who may want to develop in the future or split up property? What do you see as the, the possibilities for Clickattack County's, uh, land base with regards to an uplisting?
Yeah, whenever you have an endangered species in the, in the county or in the vicinity of a proposed land use action, that would need to be considered, uh, the impacts to that endangered species would need to be considered. So it's, it, if the land use action triggers CIPA, it certainly would have to be considered under CIPA and then any, uh, impacts evaluated and appropriate mitigations put in place. Uh, I would suspect, I would expect, uh, that in the county's critical areas, that may end up being additional, additionally designated critical areas where there are Western gray squirrels that could also affect people's land use actions. And, um, and it's an interesting thing about Western gray squirrel. One, one breeding pair of squirrels may have seven or eight or more nests and, but only one is typically active and they might move around from nest to nest over different years. So you could have a plethora of nests and you don't really know which one is active, but they're all protected. So you could see how this could result in, uh, real, a real complicated situation for any kind of land use action, whether it's, it's development, conversion to agriculture, uh, active agriculture and active and existing agriculture or timber harvest, where you've got, you've got an endangered species with multiple nests. You're not sure which one is actually in use, but they're all, all ending up being protected and it ha, it could have a far-reaching effect.
What percentage of Clickcat County do you think is covered by Western gray squirrel habit?
If you look at the periodic status review, they, uh, the most recent one, they've identified some critical habitats and it, and basically they're calling anything, all of the forested range of Clickcat County as uh, as critical habitat. It's quite an expansive definition of habitat, so it's, it's gotta be the, I mean, there's some marginal forest zone on, on the breaks of the Clickcat and east of Clickcat River, but the Simcoe's and, uh, uh, the west side of the Clickcat River and all of Western Clickcat County is essentially considered habitat within the range of the Western gray squirrel. It comes back to my earlier point, uh, Commissioner, that there's not a really good understanding of the Western gray squirrel's use of different forest types and the correlation between presence and habitat conditions. And really that should be understood better before there's a rush to uplisting. And I'll, I'll add, add to this. You've triggered my thought, uh, the State Fish and Wildlife Commission is the ultimate decision maker. The Department of Fish and Wildlife Director, Kelly Seusswind, they answer to the Fish and Wildlife Commission, and it's like their Board of Directors. And the Fish and Wildlife Commission has recently, uh, become quite a controversial body because of some positions that they've taken regarding hunting and, uh, wildlife conservation strategies in the state of Washington. They've kind of moved to more of a preservation model and they have a new conservation policy that they're taking public comment on currently, which move, would move the Department of Fish and Wildlife to more of a preservation model uh, and more emphasis on, on uplisting and protecting species rather than managing uh, wildlife and, and wildlife ma, management, uh, the traditional theory of wildlife management and conservation biology. So I, I would expect that, uh, the Fish and Wildlife Commission is likely to, given the makeup of that commission and some of the positions and statements that they've made, they're probably likely to uplist and, and not heed the attention or heed the public comments on uplisting, but uh, I hope, I hope to avoid that. I know that, I think I saw that they have recently extended the public comment period on the uplisting of Western gray squirrel. So there's an opportunity for us to change this trajectory.
I guess I'll speak to Commissioner Christopher. I've had twenty years of testifying before Oregon and Washington State's Fish and Wildlife Commission. I have a very, I, I have an opinion, um, which I probably shouldn't say in public of their department. I don't know that any letter or testimony we give is going to change anything by my um, understandings of both states' commissions. Uh, but I do think we should try. I, and I would also say that I believe the Western gray squirrel habitat is far more than just forest acres. Um, it's scrub oak acres. Um, like I said, on my property map, I have a little section of scrub oak in the corner by a pond and it's stated right on there. Uh, Western gray squirrel habitat. So good luck fixing the dike of my pond or whatever else and actually getting a permit for it, so. I, I would recommend that this board at, at least comes up with some letter or official policy stance on the issue.
Jason, what's your, um, how's your interaction been with Senator King and the representatives?
Yeah, we, we've briefed, uh, a number of our legislators on the issue and it really is, you know, they can give comments to Department of Fish and Wildlife or to individual members or, or come to a Fish and Wildlife Commission meeting, but as the, as the commissioner, this chair said there, uh, it hasn't been resonating very well. Comments have not resonated very well with the Fish and Wildlife Commission, and they are appointed, not elected. Uh, they're appointed by the governor and they clearly have a direction that they are headed. Uh, so it's, I, I agree with you that, uh, it's unlikely to change the minds of some of those commissioners, no, no matter what is said, but we have submitted, the WFPA comments are largely about policy and the implications of, uh, adopting policy based on incomplete science. But the, we've also got, uh, comments put into the record from a scientific group called Nakazi. Their wildlife group submitted technical comments about this biological and technical comments about the periodic status review and the lack of information and some of the flaws in the population estimates that Department of Fish and Wildlife has. So it would, it's, you know, it, it, building that record, uh, with the facts is really important. I encourage you to look at Nakazi's comments, the WDF, or WFPA comments, and then your landowners in Clickcat County, their comments, and craft something that is appropriate for the county as to take as a position. And I, again, once again, I'm glad to help with that.
Thank you.
Could you get us the Nakazi comments? Um, I gave, uh, the, the WFPA comments to my seatmates this morning. I don't know if they had a chance to look at it, but um, I think we need to definitely be on the record and we need to be, um, starting to gain standing in any way because um, I don't know where your, um, WFPA members are at, but if they're going to steamroll us, or I hope, I would hope that the, the facts are going to be brought out in a court of law and at a certain point.
Uh, absolutely, Commissioner. I'd be glad to get you the Nakazi comments. Uh, I, I don't, I just want to be factual about one thing. An uplisting, because we've heard this from Department of Fish and Wildlife several times, an uplisting by the Fish and Wildlife Commission to endangered does not automatically mean regulations. The Forest Practices Board would have to adopt regulations restricting forestry activities. But, uh, as has been seen previously, anybody can petition the Forest Practices Board to make new rules. And if you've got an endangered species, there's likely to be a petition to take a regulatory, uh, rulemaking and, uh, mandatory protections that take away that flexibility that I talked about earlier. So the, the, the act of uplisting to an endangered status doesn't automatically mean rules that restrict, but it's likely and or, or more likely at minimum. And, and with, with other actions, other land uses besides forestry like agriculture, it certainly gives the opportunity for, uh, opposition under CIPA or critical areas or other, other means, so.
That, that would be my concern is that while it is not, it does not automatically create a regulatory approach. You can be darn sure that every comment you see on every CIPA is going to be pointing that out and trying to ensure that, uh, you can not do whatever you were hoping to do on your own private property.
Exactly. So I will follow up and get you the, the, uh, Nakazi comments, Jake.
Did you say October twenty?
The Fish and Wildlife, uh, handout says comments are due by October twenty-seventh. Is that correct?
Uh, I, I believe that was the date. I don't know if it's been extended beyond that. Is that, uh, Commissioner Zoller, is that a new update?
That was handed to us today.
Yeah, I think that's a Fish and Wildlife extended comment to that day.
Okay, okay, yeah. Then that's the new date.
So with that, um, if we were drafting a letter, who's taking lead on this? Or maybe Mr. Spadero has a, um, uh, draft letter or something that we can take and tweak? Um, and then I see a question from our HR manager as well.
Another option might be, um, for your consideration is probably the most knowledgeable person or one of the most knowledgeable people, might be the former Director McClure. Possibly he would be willing to draft something for your review or at least a starting point based on his um, long tenure in the natural resources area. Might just be one option you want to consider.
I'd be glad to give you, uh, additional comments from some of our member companies that I, uh, copies that I have. And maybe that helps you formulate yours. I don't know about drafting a letter for the commissioner, but I'd certainly be willing to review something.
Jake, do you have time to work on a draft? And if I add things and then we have Jason review it?
So the way you see the WFPA letters, uh, to me, there was one about policy and there was one about the technical aspects. I would hope that we could do something much the same. Um, and, and if Director McClure would be willing, uh, because I know this was on his agenda. He was working on this before he left. He also had brought in Jenny to work on it before she had left. Um, I would hope that, that if he's willing to volunteer, um, because this matters so much, uh, to the county, um. I mean, when you look at the, the squirrel overall population, um, this could matter just as much as not water rights in terms of the, the development growth and anything else that can be allowed in Clickattack County. And while W, uh, WDFW loves to say it does not necessarily create regulation, we all know better than that.
So, well, I do, I do as well, but I just, I factually, it doesn't automatically mean that. And, and, yeah, I, I agree with you completely, Commissioner.
Well, it, it kinda does, but it's just a matter of how long before it does.
I mean, I think that suggests just be a starting point, then ultimately you guys would craft the final letter. I guess the issue is it may be under my very short tenure title, but, uh, in, in.
You have no history, so I was not gonna have you craft a letter.
And Richard doesn't either.
If this board wants to reach out to Mr. McClure, I would, I would expect a member of this board would need to do so and not direct staff to reach out to a civilian. Um, that's my recommendation.
A, in, in honestly, we, I mean, we could draft the policy side of it. I'm not too worried about that. It's the technical side that, that, I mean, he knows, he, he, he's worked with Nakazi, he's worked on the spotted owl. I mean, he has that mint, that mind to do that, that honestly, I don't have time to get that.
And he had worked on this a lot. I know that, yeah. Jake, can you reach out and ask him if he has the time to?
Okay.
Re, re- 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 engage his knowledge, uh, reactivate that section of his mind?
Yeah, I, I'd be well too, so long as it's the board's consensus. Don't want to do anything by myself. Sounds like you have it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it only takes two. You don't need, you know, unless you want to have a vote on it, which we can do that too.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to reach out. We need all the information we can get, and he is the one-stop source on gray squirrels, and I know that.
How do you feel, sir?
I think we could manage it ourself, but if the board wants to reach out, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
With technical, yeah, with technical background is his expertise.
And I would and and I would hope it's more than a traffic, because I don't want to. I want to I want to sign it, but. Yeah. And I would like to say thank you to Jason. Jason has done a lot with this. He's put all the people together in the same room. Jenny was, you know, tied into that a while ago and then all of our knowledge walked away and. I I can't say enough thanks to Mr. Mr. Spadero for all those work on this because the the timber site is one thing, but. The land use and the use of your own property for all other uses is a whole nother level. That I don't know if it's been really brought to light in this.
And I would agree, and I want to thank Mr. Spadero too, and I'm sure if we sat down over a beer and. Had some conversations on our opinions of the Fish and Wildlife Commission. How they're appointed, why they're appointed, and what votes they trade with other commissioners, we would. Want to be able to write a book with our knowledge on the Fish and Wildlife Commission, but you're going to get me all wound up.
And as busy as you are, thank you for offering to be available to us.
There's there's nothing worse than politics except for wildlife politics. Wildlife politics is far worse than regular politics.
Yeah, it's. I I testified to the Fish and Wildlife Commission on their draft conservation policy and it was quite an. Eye opening conversation, the politics that are involved there. And Commissioner Anderson, I I have just sent you the Nakazi. Technical comments, not only their comments to the Fish and Wildlife, but also. The commission, but also their peer review of the Western Gray squirrel. Periodic status review, so you might share that with the other commissioners and. Mr. McClure, if he's going to help you, and I will track down other comments and send those to you as well.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to help. Thank you all.
Seen the Nakazi comments, they're somewhere in my email for. Probably a month and a half ago, but I don't know where they are, so yeah, if you want to share them, I'll read them again. Thank you, sir, for your insightfulness. Always appreciate it and come back anytime.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Hi.
Bye.
You can get a hunting license form in Oregon.
It's not even threatened.
They eat them.
I was gonna, I was gonna say they taste like chicken, but.
That's a groundswell.
They all, they all eat just fine. Well, they need to swim across wherever the safety that.
Okay.
Moving. Found a deer in my garden yesterday. That's the first time ever. Six foot fences, actually probably more like seven.
Was the door open?
No, it went through the wire somehow, so I went out and. It was lucky enough to be ushered out to safety. And not ushered into my freezer, but. That season starts soon enough. As long as the road hunters don't scare them all the way first, we're now at the stage where we have all the. Vancouver people showing up in the territory and driving down the roads, stopping in the middle of the road and sitting over their hood glassing deer on private property. And it changes the patterns of the bucks and the does no longer sleep in my field and it's just all nervous and then. Hunting season shows up and they're all driving five miles an hour through private property that they have no access on.
And now no W P T.
And yeah. Well, that started showing to the world.
Want to go into board pending and. Bring up again what we talked about this morning. I know Commissioner Zoller wanted to spend this lunch and think about direction.
And I got company for lunch and my lunch went away. I had a visitor at lunchtime. I started to look at things. I also left a message. For the prosecutor to sit down and just have a conversation with him to ask questions one on one. About that, so if we could continue this on Tuesday. I'd like to get some specific answers.
One thing I would be worried about is usually with orders, you have a limited amount of time if you plan to appeal this said order. And I don't want that getting away if that's the direction of the board.
I would agree, since they've now, since they've now made it official, that needs to be one thing on your question is what is the? Statute of appeals, what is the timeline on that if this board so chose? To appeal.
Was that in the notice at all? For the timeline on appeal?
I did not read it anywhere.
It's not.
Now that would that would be in the.
It's just under the statute.
That would be in one of their statutes, but it might be in their main statute that gives them authority on their whatevers too, so.
I think it'd be like an administrative procedure statute or somewhere else.
It might be.
So today is Tuesday. If I can visit with him before Thursday, maybe I could ask some of these questions, but I don't know what his schedule is.
Yeah, I I would just plan it for next Tuesday and let's have the discussion. Next Tuesday, so it zoomed in. Anybody that wants to partake in what we're discussing, we're not hiding anything from them.
Unless you guys have other ideas.
No, we need to come to a determination on what we're going to do, if any. And get it done as opposed to kicking the can further down the road. Now that it's official.
So I would say if if the decision of the board is to sue. And we've already had. Asked the P A if he'd be willing to do that and the answer was no, in essence. Or you don't need outside legal counsel, you know, the answer's been pretty much no.
Right.
No, it hasn't. We haven't asked.
I think we ask his opinion on legal counsel for the moratorium.
We have never asked to file suit. We've never asked an opinion on filing suit. So. I would hate to again read into something. Because we think we know without actually knowing.
So. I guess if we were to ask to file suit, we would need to have the rationale and the basis for that. That you would hope to get from the P A, not us giving it to the P A. So then you would need to ask that question. And I don't know how in the world you'd ever phrase that. And then, you know, there's multiple things here because we went through that list. And one of them was hiring outside legal counsel, asking for outside legal counsel. I know that's that's been discussed many a times. And I believe we have asked that question as how you're outside legal counsel, and we were told no. And and so.
Because he is willing and able to do it.
So. The the direction, I guess, from my perspective, there's the process, talking about the process. And from that point, you can't just go and ask the Superior Court Judge, can we hire outside legal counsel? It's not the process. You have to go and find. An attorney who's willing to do the work. To act as the outside legal counsel and then you petition the Superior Court Judge using this attorney to. Represent us with regards to this. Section of law. And if you, that's a direction that the board would like to go, then you need to start that thought process of how are you going to find outside legal counsel? Who's willing to represent the board in this action? And I'm just throwing these out there, you know, so that you have something to think about for next Tuesday in your discussions.
Well, and with the new determination. That's another view now for the things that were said in there and the things that were quoted. And I have some vague spots that I'd like to have answers for, that if I'm thinking in the right way about what they said. Or if I'm wrong about what they said, and I'd like to hear that from him before I try to make another decision. That's what I'm looking for.
Total.
Clarification.
Makes total sense to me.
So next Tuesday? And I can't imagine that our appeal time would be that short.
Yeah, I can't imagine.
Days.
Fourteen days, okay.
A lot of the times.
Really?
Yeah, on a lot of our decisions, it's fourteen days.
Interesting.
I may, I'll call them this afternoon and ask even, and then I'll try to check the statute.
And I don't, I don't know. Come Tuesday, ready to make a decision.
Yes, come Tuesday, ready to make a decision. And the prosecutor might be able to answer that question.
I guess I should say as short as fourteen days sometimes.
I was gonna say, that just seems really short to me. Um, anything else?
Not for me.
Better to meow.
A meow.
Anything from staff?
Happy next week. I think with FSEC pending, maybe we should hold that. And maybe by then we could go over our W D F W letter. Because we have to have that in before the end of October.
Yeah, but we might be able to get that on a Tuesday too, so it's like today's Tuesday, the morning session, we ended up filling it up. So I would say I wouldn't remove, I was gonna say you have to notice that because that's next Thursday, isn't it? And you don't have anything for next Thursday.
Discussion for next Thursday's workshop, do we need it?
Uh, oh, October fifth, hold on. I got bad news on that one. You've got something at eight thirty or ten thirty, Lori. I've got the Columbia River Policy Advisory Group at nine thirty.
Yeah, Clickadet County Transportation Policy Committee.
Oh, yeah, there's.
Do you, so I guess what can we put on for this Thursday? Can we do the afternoon?
I know I'm now busy in the afternoon.
Are you gonna go do that?
Well, and I had a different meeting at two o'clock anyway, so. Now I'm running from one to another.
Are you going to incorporate Jeff in with your tour?
I haven't decided.
Just make sure if you're out there, you've got an airband radio with you.
I don't know that I will be on the airport property for. My stuff, but we'll find out when it happens. So, yeah, I would, I would say let's just not plan for next Thursday since you guys have other things. And anything you come up with between now and then can either get as an add on on Tuesday. Or we'll try to. More completely fill out a Thursday workshop, so it's not just a morning session. Because I I would even rather have it every two weeks and have a full day. Literally, let's get here and start at nine and let's not get down until four. Versus three hour workshops and then packing for three hours. The next week, kind of, that's just my personal. Take on it anyway. That was just feels weird to come to work for three hours. And then I just have to leave and go run around the county to have meetings elsewhere for the afternoon.
There's one other thing about the minutes. If you guys had a chance to take a look at those minutes, the mock minutes that Diane had sent to. Because it's, it takes so long to get that fixed.
The formatting of the minutes, not the actual what's being written.
No, because.
But.
What's written, written, it's pretty much the same.
Yeah. Right. I've seen it. I don't have a problem with changing the formatting itself. I haven't. I need to go back and look through the minutes again. I need to, before I approve that said minutes. One of the other minutes that have already been approved. I would eventually like to recommend the board. Edit those. But I don't know exactly the legal standing of doing such a thing. Editing minutes that have already been approved. So I do have a, I need to ask a legal counsel question on policy. For doing such. And then we'll have the discussion because if it can't be done, then no sense having the discussion. If it can, then we can have the discussion and chooses the board whether we want to edit said minutes. But that's a different set of minutes that I just realized that already been. Put through. Yeah, that's all I have.
Just for clarification.
I mean, yes.
I'm happy. I think. Much more.
Don't finish it. Mr. Chairman, do we have anything else for the good of the order?
I'm not saying anything. I'm sure I'll think of something the minute we. Stop, but.
One thing to be aware of, we are currently looking for a federal government shutdown, midnight of September thirtieth. Something to keep aware. Most organizations are doing some sort of planning around that. I think most of ours would only be around. Any federal funds or anything we get on the roadside, but. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how the conversations are going back there and. Wish they could get their stuff together.
That was the other thing. At Wasack, I was talking about how we. Were essentially finished with our budget and. Going out to public hearing and every. Eyeball in the room. Just completely unheard of and everybody in the room was in a state of shock. Because it sounds like they're all, you know, December fifteenth types. Which we might find ourselves to be a December fifteenth type next year, but.
Why?
Never know. All right, what is this?
You know who this is?
Can't read it.
Oh, it's Dave Barta.
Yeah.
And he did sit in on the Gorge Commission. Meeting.
Yeah, that's what this is about.
Yeah, and so did some other citizens. There were some other concerned citizens that in, which was good, that people are interesting.
It's interesting that they don't even live in the Gorge Commission area, but they're. Sitting in, that was an interesting.
Deal constitutional right, private property right issue and. You don't know where it could go, where, you know, as we move through the process. Boundaries may be requested to extend and. I've been surprised about some boundaries that I've learned about that I didn't know about on Wild and Scenic Rivers in the Trout Lake area. It was deemed. Wild and I didn't realize that they came up and out of the corridor of the river and impacted private lands, but they do. That's why we have the whiskey distillery at the port rather than at on a parcel up in Trout Lake. With a beautiful view of the mountain. When they applied for their application, Mochi told them, I'm sorry, you have to go to the Gorge Commission.
Wait, yeah. Wait, you telling me that something on the Wild and Scenic River up by Trout Lake would have to go to the Gorge Commission?
It actually became wild when they put it through.
I get that, but why is it?
But the Gorge Commission has no authority.
Well, they had to go apply for an application for a property. Well, they had to go apply for an application for property, and this was through, I heard it from the owner of the distillery. Uh, that when they applied, they had to go to apply through the gorge commission because of all the impacts.
Property.
Yes, because what happens is they administer the properties for the Forest Service when it's on land. Uh, and that's where that went.
So the Wild and Scenic National River Act, uh, one interesting thing about that. Is it has no regulatory ability or function, and so.
Does. Um, the, in the water, in the, in the lower Wild and Scenic section on the white salmon, it's the water quality. Surface of the water and water quality. In the beginning, they tried to come up on land and go out. And the county fought and fought and fought to push it back to that. The only administrative things they have on land in that little corridor, which we kept the boundaries really narrow, was to cooperate with the Department of Ecology. And the counties and stuff to administer those lands, so they give comment, but they don't have any authority. But I believe what happened up at Trout Lake area and the Mount Adams wilderness area was they. Did that after the Wild and Scenic Act for the Lower River. And it moved along through the process and everybody considered it up in the wild area of Mount Adams, didn't pay attention. And I think we have a different designation up there of things that we need to look at that we don't understand, maybe.
So when, when it was done, there was a section that was considered wild, and there was a section that was considered scenic.
Correct.
And but but still during that, there, there's no regulatory function. So like, when you come through. We had that application for a glamping thing right there next to Ford Ice Road.
Because you're in the recreational scenic area there.
Uh, and you're, you're outside the gorge national scenic area, so it's, it's in that area.
Correct.
The comments we would get from the Forest Service. Came straight from the Forest Service, didn't go through the gorge commission, but they had to admit in their comments that they have no regulatory ability.
On land in that ability. There was a time when they were formulating all this, they actually went around because they were trying to have jurisdiction on land. They were trying to even on the Clickatap River go way up and beyond over the hillsides where you could see. And that had to be fought back in all the meetings to bring that back, so they wouldn't have jurisdiction on land in that recreational and scenic areas. They even came through before they had that set in stone and tried to um, regulate the local businesses. They wanted uh, a fee and things at the gas station, the gas sold at Husum. They, they came in and visited with the owners, uh, and that had. Become a battle and a controversy. They came to our Whitewater office there at Northwestern Lake and wanted. At one time to know what we sold in photographs, what we sold in sweatshirts, T-shirts, they wanted a portion of everything and said that they would do just like they were on the river. They also wanted to create a computer system at the scenic area that connected with our computers. They would do reservations.
Did you give them money?
No, we did not, but it was a, it was quite a year's battle. But what I'm saying is, I think that we need to find out what's happening in that wild section. In the Trout Lake section, because I was told that. Uh, distillery is at the port now being built, because the owner, who I know. Could not build it on his property that he planned in Trout Lake. He started that in Portland.
Right, I want more information on that. Did he apply for a permit with the county and well, she told him, no, sorry, we will handle your permit. It has to go through the gorge commission.
Right, that's what I was.
That would be a good question to ask her when she's in here on Thursday, because I.
See if that really happened.
Right. Verif- verify the information.
Cause I was shocked that he didn't build it, he'd been planning it for years up there. And there was one other that had a problem up in there in his same area that he told me about, that there was one, one of his neighbors too.
So usually the issue up up there is, is if you want to build on your property. And you're within the two hundred foot mark of the shoreline and state mark significance, you would have to go through the shoreline's. Permit process, which then it ends up going in front of ecology, just like the thing that we did. But that's what you have happened to you, not saying, because it'd be a cold day in hell before the gorge commission ever had any jurisdiction outside of their bounds.
Well, and that's where I'm at, is how do they have any jurisdiction by state law? On anything outside the boundaries of the scene. Uh, to weigh in and give a permit or deny a permit, that's like them saying they have jurisdiction in my squirrel habitat.
Well, I didn't follow that effort, so I don't know what ended up in that effort, in the wild section. In the Trout Lake area up to Mount Adams. I, I didn't follow that.
It's still non-regulatory, and so saying that you'd get a permit from them, I mean, it could be an easy. Most people who come in for permits, they think they're talking about one group, they're, they.
And he may have made an error.
That's.
That's what I'm thinking.
Let's hope.
But I do, I do wanna know.
Yeah, me too. I will visit with Mochi and ask her.
Yeah, well, let's ask her on Thursday.
Yeah, okay, I'll put it on the list.
Um, yeah, we're gonna save that little notes, cause I need those. Um, anything else for the good of the order? Not hearing anything. I would entertain a motion.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn our meeting until nine AM Thursday, September twenty eighth for the scheduled workshops.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to adjourn until nine o'clock on Thursday? Um, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning until Thursday, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Thank you, everybody for attending.